Good evening, and welcome to this, the special meeting in the Livermore City Council, January 29th. I now call the meeting to order. The role show that all members of the council are present and accounted for. I ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I'm going to reorder the agenda, and by the way, welcome to everyone in the audience tonight, and to those out in the multi-service center, and also at home. We've been in information and public input gathering mode for the last eight months, so we certainly appreciate all of the input and the continuing input that we're getting from the community, both in person, through emails, phone calls. I certainly appreciate all of the input as to all of the council members. So with that, I'm going to reorder the agenda. We're going to move the public comment period to after the presentation, so that way we've got a better idea of what's going on as we go into this. And then after the staff presentation, then we'll have the public comment. Okay? All right, so moving on to the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, members of the council.
Steve Stewart.
Yes, sir. So, we are here this evening in response to your direction given during your public meetings at the end of November. Your direction was to develop two concept plans, one with a hotel on the east side of South Livermore Avenue, and one with a hotel on the west side of South Livermore Avenue, that those concepts would incorporate the key learnings developed by the steering committee, public feedback obtained through the public engagement program, and then also your goals for those downtown sites. So David Early from Placeworks is here again tonight, and will present the draft concepts and evaluation. After David's presentation, I'll return and walk through some of the staff recommendations and next steps. So with that, here is Mr. Early from Placeworks.
Thank you, Steve. Council members, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. It's been a long path to get here, but I'm pleased to be able to present to you work that I'm sure you've already seen and many members of the public have seen, but these are our two concepts that we developed, that direction that we got from you at our meetings in November. I'm going to start by seeing if this clicker works. There we go. I am going to start with a little tiny little bit of background about the project and the key themes that came from the public input, summarize your direction, and then introduce the concepts and our evaluation report of them. And then, as Steve said, I'll turn it back to him. In terms of the project background, I think you all are familiar with this, but just in case members of the audience don't know, you did identify this a full year ago, the new development in the downtown, as one of your priorities for the year 2017. And you directed staff to put together a committee and to put a process in place. You appointed a 19-person steering committee to devise an outreach plan regarding the downtown, and you did that in March. And that committee, many of the members are here this evening, they met from April to July, and they really had three major outcomes. They reviewed background information that they put together for public dissemination, they devised an outreach plan for involving the public, and they created four initial land use concepts that were presented to the public during that outreach process. The outreach process itself occurred from September through early November. It was a very extensive campaign that I'll talk about in a few moments, and it resulted in a lot of feedback and input that we brought to you at a pair of meetings that were held back-to-back on November 27th and 29th. And at those meetings, you, in the end, gave us direction to develop two additional concepts, which we're bringing to you this evening. So when we talk about the key themes that we heard in the public input in the fall from September through November, it's important to understand that that input came from a number of different channels. We really tried to make sure that we could get large numbers of people involved, and we did, in fact, we were pretty successful in that regard, having held two community workshops, five neighborhood district meetings, two downtown tours, 11 different pop-up events, and we made 11 different presentations to schools and community organizations, and had a very robust online engagement presence as well, that got hundreds of people involved through online input also. So it was a very meaningful process, and it resulted in a number of important findings. And the first of those is that we got some ranking about what issues were most important for community members. We got 1,175 individual worksheets that people used to rank the important items to them in the downtown. They ranked them 1 through 10, and you can see the results here, with parking, community character and design, and open space as the most important issues, and then others down the list, all the way down to public finance and housing at the bottom of the list. And so we've been working from this and really focusing in on parking, community character, and open space, but also, of course, looking at all the other items, including traffic and circulation, hotel, retail, and housing, and so forth. All of those are in the mix, but with that focus created by the community. We did also hear a lot of areas of consensus among community members about issues within the downtown. We heard, for instance, that people really did care very much about making sure that we had adequate replacement parking and parking to serve new uses, that we would care about traffic and circulation and make sure that cars would still be able to move easily through the downtown. There was a strong desire for new development to be compatible with Livermore's historic character. There was a strong interest in a village green and other open space, a strong interest in a boutique hotel, an appropriate amount of retail and restaurants, and a range of other uses. There was pretty broad support for at least a modest amount of housing. I want to say here that there were definitely some members who wrote back to us, who said that they didn't want to see any housing, but as a majority, certainly, most people said a modest amount of housing in the downtown was appropriate. And we did see pretty strong support for a new east-west street going through the site to break up the block size and make it more walkable and more like the scale of the rest of downtown Livermore. And at the same time, we heard diverging opinions on several items. The most obvious of those is the location and design of the hotel. We had strong consensus in favor of a boutique hotel, but split opinions about exactly where it should be. We also heard split opinions about the exact size and type of open space. There was definitely a desire for both hardscape area and an open green or park, but some differing ideas about exactly how that should be configured. There were differing opinions about exactly where parking should go, despite a strong consensus in favor of having adequate parking, and we heard diverging opinions about other uses like cultural facilities and a conference facility. But we did bring that information to you, and at your meeting on November 27th and 29th, you heard from many members of the public who spoke about these items. And then you went through each of the topics in order that had come to you from our work, and you went through them in that same order, starting with parking, open space, and pedestrian connectivity, and going on down the line. And you gave us very clear direction about those items, and you specifically directed that we come up with two additional concepts for your review that would be very similar in many regards, but would differ from each other in whether the hotel would be on the east side or the west side of South Livermore Avenue. And so I want to shift gears here now and show you those two concepts. Before I show them to you, I did want to make two sort of overall comments. The first, just to be, make sure you and members of the audience are aware that these two concepts I'm about to show you are the two that have been put together by staff and consultants. I know that there have been some other concepts published in the newspaper, for example. It's great that other people have had ideas, but we want to make sure the council in particular understands that the two concepts that we've been really able to evaluate are the two put together by staff and consultants, and those are the two that I'm going to be showing this evening. The other thing to underline once again is that these are only concepts, and that all the ideas in these concepts can be mixed and matched to create other ideas. So we've heard people say, for instance, that gee, could this housing project have more of the footprint of the hotel over here? And the answer is generally yes to those kinds of things. And I'll point some of those things out, but I want to just underscore right now that these are still conceptual ideas, and mixing and matching between these two, and from other ideas that you're seeing and other ideas that other folks have presented, is all perfectly fine at this time. So with that, let me move forward and show you these two drawings. This is the first of the two, which is the east-side hotel concept. But before I talk about the special things about this east-side hotel, let me point out the items that are the same on all of them, which came out because of the guidance that you gave us. Both of the alternatives or concepts that we're going to look at have this area in common, and they really are the centerpiece of both of the two concepts. And this is the concept of a Stockman's Park, which has both the open green space as well as a hardscape plaza that's surrounded by retail, where that retail takes into account Blacksmith Square. Blacksmith Square gets incorporated into this retail development, and the retail development can then both have the historical character of Blacksmith Square and also surround a part of the park. The park itself opens out onto South Livermore Avenue, but is contained by buildings on many of its sides, and also includes room for both a science center and a black box theater, which would be run by nonprofit or cultural organizations here in town who have already stepped forward and shown an interest in doing fundraising and management for those two facilities. So these components are the same in both of the two concepts as you directed. You directed us, for instance, to explore whether it would work to have K Street run through. We studied that pretty closely, and we concluded that it was good to have a K Street pedestrian promenade and vehicular access as well, but there wasn't necessarily a need for the street to go all the way through. You'll see that in both concepts. We did do a little tinkering with the design that was shown at the original meeting, because we wanted to really make sure it all worked, but this is basically the concept you asked us to move forward with, and it's still in place here. The other thing that's pretty much the same in both of the two concepts is the presence of parking and the east-west street. So the east-west street runs through the site in both concepts, and it creates a separation between the development portion here and the area for a parking garage and a surface parking lot south of that street. This parking would be located so as to easily serve the existing shops along First Street. There would be most likely additional parking built in an expansion of the I Street Garage. You asked us to consider the extent to which that I Street Garage might really be necessary, and what we concluded is that as the project is really built out, you will probably need at least a portion of it, but if you study this closely, you'll see that our I Street Garage expansion only takes up the room of what the city owns today with a minor addition and does not require additional significant land acquisition in this area. So at your direction, we were able to cut that back, make a smaller I Street Garage expansion here in favor of a parking structure here and surface parking in this area. Those components, the Stockman's Park, the retail, the cultural facilities, the parking, and the parking on I Street, they are the same in both of the two concepts. As we then move forward and look at this east-side hotel concept, the place the two concepts differ is over here on the east side of South Livermore Avenue and the remaining site at the west corner here, northwest corner at L and Railroad. In the east-side hotel concept, perhaps not surprisingly, there is a hotel on the east side. And that is the hotel very similar to the one that's been previously proposed by Presidio Properties. It still follows that same footprint. We have added here a road looping around that would allow for both public access and, most importantly, disabled parking to serve the Bankhead Theater that would wrap around the hotel, but you'd have the hotel with about 130 rooms built on this east-side site and with a 100-car parking structure below it. Then over here on the western end of the site, near the intersection of L and Railroad, you have a housing project with about 130 units. This would be configured in a way that it's got kind of an enclosing pair of arms here that surround a public courtyard, and then the housing itself surrounds a parking structure, and on the roof of that parking structure is an open area that can be of a quite significant size and serve as the open space for the folks who are living in this housing. So that's one approach to this overall project in terms of where the hotel and housing go. East-side hotel concept has the hotel over here on the east side and then housing over here. Then, moving forward, on the west-side hotel concept, again, you have all these similar parts, Stockman's Park, the retail, the cultural facilities, the parking down here, the parking up here, and in this project instead, in this concept, you have the switch. So you have the hotel over here on the far west side of the site, at the corner of Railroad and L, and then you have housing in two locations. It's not possible to put all the requested housing onto the east-side site. We have approximately 70 units in four stories in this area with limited retail to create a mixed-use building along South Livermore Avenue and have some lively interest along the street. And then we have some additional housing over here between the hotel and the K Street extension. It has been pointed out that, in fact, if you go back to this east-side concept, and I'm going to try and do that, if the machine will cooperate. There we are. Oh, there, we went too far. This larger housing building could conceivably be substituted with three buildings, footprint like this, that would all be housing. So that would be certainly another way to mix and match these ideas here and do that instead. But in this west-side concept, you have the housing in these three buildings, and then you have the hotel on the far west side. So that gives you an overview of the three concepts. I want now to go through just several slides to talk about our evaluation of them at your request. We did put together an evaluation workbook that followed the evaluation that we did for the first four concepts, same format, same set of issues, but gives you some background on those. And in fact, I want to point out that because the concepts themselves are so similar, they're also pretty similar when it comes to most of our findings and analysis. And so as we go into this, first off, really right off the top, we can say that from the perspective of cultural facilities, finance, and phasing, both concepts are really almost identical. On the financing side, the annual operational cost for the city would range, we estimate, between $3.2 and $3.3 million. At the level we're working at, honestly, those are essentially the same number. These are all estimates, so we can't be so precise as to say that there's really a big difference there. They have the same cultural facilities. The phasing would work equally well for both of them, so there's very little difference in those regards. And in fact, as we move forward into some of these other issues, even though there are slight differences, they're also very similar in those regards, too. So for instance, on parking, both of these concepts have a surplus of parking spaces. The numbers are slightly different, 31 spaces on the east-side hotel, 23 surplus spaces on the west side, but in both cases, enough parking to replace the existing parking and to also meet all demand that's generated under the zoning code from all of the uses that are accommodated on the sites. In terms of open space, both concepts have very extensive open space networks. Both of them have the Stockman's Park and the adjacent plaza. Both of them have an east-west corridor along the new road through the site, an ability to create really a very noticeable walkway that goes along the site in both areas and connects across South Livermore Avenue over to the Bankhead Theater. There are some minor differences, though, and most particularly, there's very extensive private open space on the rooftop of this housing project in the east-side hotel concepts. In the west-side concept, because of the dispersed buildings, you get a little more publicly accessible open space. Members of the public would be able to walk among these buildings and enjoy those areas of the site, which would be a little more closed off in this concept. On traffic circulation, both concepts resulted in traffic that we believe to be acceptable. In all cases, the delay that people would experience in the downtown would be well under a minute at every one of the intersections that we studied. We did study four separate intersections, and we did see some increase in traffic, of course, that comes from the additional development. And so on the east-side concept, you get really one location with an increase of more than 10 seconds, and that is the corner of Railroad and South Livermore, where you see 16 seconds of increased delay. When you move the hotel over to the western side, you disperse the traffic a little bit, and so you have a little less delay here, an increase of only 14 seconds, but your delay at Livermore, at L and Railroad goes up to 12, as compared to only a 7-second increase when you look at the east-side hotel site. So again, in our opinion, acceptable changes in either case, slightly different areas where the effect occurs. There is also, of course, both a lot of similarity and some minor differences in terms of circulation. You do have the east-west street in both of the concepts. You have the small street running around the backside of the building on the east side of Livermore Avenue, so that you can get disabled parking in there. You have the extension of K Street into a parking lot with a pedestrian connection, and then you have parking in surface parking lots and the two parking structures. These are the same in all of them. You do also, some of the differences are that the east-side hotel concept has a pretty short walk here that goes from the park to this residential building. This walkway gets to be a little bit longer when it runs through among the buildings when there's three separate buildings. This also can, because they're separate buildings, it can include a separate north-south public pathway when you disperse the buildings that you don't get when you have the larger building that allows for the private open space on the roof deck. The hotel, of course, is different in the two different concepts. The east-side hotel concept remains one that has an advantage that we've talked about before, that it would be highly visible to motorists coming in off the freeway on Livermore Avenue. It is also adjacent to the Bankhead Theater, which some of our experts have seen as a real strong plus for the hotel, and it would be built on a site that's pretty contained, so we can understand that site as its future unfolds. The rest of the site is already developed, and so there wouldn't be any question about what future development would be. That's a little bit different on the west side, where both this side of our site and the other side of L Street are currently not in a developed state. It would be a little more of a development unto itself for a little while, but it's still a relatively strong site. It would be visible for motorists who are coming down L Street. It would be closer to some of the First Street shops, particularly as you come along L, and it would have easy access to the parking structure on L Street, whereas a hotel over here would have a somewhat further walk to a parking structure area. So there are pros and cons of both of these. We're very interested to hear public comment and your comment this evening. Both of the concepts do have additional meeting space. The east-side hotel concept would have the ability to rely on a meeting space in the Bankhead Theater as well. If the hotel and conference space are on the west side, then they would rely more on connections to the shops and stores along First Street. Both of the concepts have very similar amounts of retail, which you see in the concepts shown here. One difference is that there's an additional 3,900 square feet of retail in the west-side hotel concept, and that's primarily located within the housing building along Livermore Avenue. It seemed very important to us, if that wasn't going to be a hotel, which would have its own retail inside it, that we would want some activation through retail of Livermore Avenue, and so we do show two retail spaces on the street there. And then I wanted, lastly, to mention differences in housing. I think those are probably pretty clear by now, but just to summarize, both do have very similar unit counts on housing, but in the east-side hotel concept, our west-side housing, we've shown in a single building that surrounds a parking structure with a rooftop garden. This would be the full number of 130 units of housing. In this one, we get three different housing buildings, one accommodating about 70 units over on the east side of Livermore Avenue, and then two more buildings between the hotel and the Stockman's Park. So differences there in how the housing is arrayed, but not different in the number of units, not different in their affordability, their unit type, or any other regards. With that, I think I can close my presentation and turn it back over to Steve. I'm available, of course, afterwards for any questions you may have.
Thanks, David. So just wanted to go over a little background on the Livermore Stockman's current disposition of property and then the offer that we've been in conversations with them after your direction. So the Stockman did observe and participate in the downtown public engagement, and they believe they could offer a solution to the community's desire for open space downtown and also satisfy the city's affordable housing obligation and the city's existing obligation to construct a park. Following conversations with community members, the Stockman conceived a concept that became an offer to revise its restriction on the use of the Civic Center campus and allow the open areas to be used for affordable housing. And on the screen there, you can see a couple of photos back in 1936 and '54 that show this is South Livermore Avenue and Pacific Avenue. Again, Pacific Avenue, South Livermore Avenue. You may recognize the barn there that's still there. And just off of the picture is this trailer. Okay, so the current agreement says that the Stockman's property can only be used for public purposes, or the city-owned property under the agreement. And it also required that the city build a park for a memorial to veterans from the Pleasanton and Murray Township. That's basically the two pieces that are associated with the agreement. Sorry, I'm getting used to this new clicker.
It's a little slow, isn't it, the way it responds?
It is. Or it could be me. So to fulfill the goal of a memorial park to veterans, which again is an existing obligation that the city is under with the Stockmans, and to recognize the Stockman's heritage, the Stockman offered the following, and I'll walk through those points, and that is to modify the original agreement, which is in 1962, to allow that area, A, to be used for affordable housing purposes for seniors with a preference for veterans, and to continue uses for public purposes. And then in consideration for that, they're requesting from the city that the city construct a park, starting later than January 1, 2025, and finishing in June of 2026 on the downtown property. They would request this list of amenities here, including that it would be named Stockman's Park. It'd be designed in the shape of a horseshoe, again, with that toe of the horseshoe touching or having frontage on Livermore Avenue with some attributes related to the components within the park, which include a level grassy area and concrete pathways, a monument located within the inner edges of the horseshoe branches, recognizing the transition of cowboys to soldiers in the Defense of the United States, and again, a memorial to the Stockman's Livermore heritage. In addition, a memorial to the residents of the Murray and Pleasanton Townships who honorably served in the armed forces. And a couple of memorials there, let's see, both served during times of conflict and times of peace in all branches of service. And then a wrought iron or metal trellis or gateway, archway at the park's entrance along that Livermore Avenue, similar to the kind that you see over at Blacksmith Square. A few of the other requirements, they would like to have an opportunity to approve the park design, since it is to commemorate them and their service, and then also provide some opportunity to comment on the compatibility with some of the uses that would surround the park, the cultural facilities and the commercial uses, primarily to make sure they don't overshadow the park and that it integrates attractively, so again, to ensure that compatibility. So part of that would entail placing an easement over the property downtown. The main part of the easement would encompass the entire park area. This is Livermore Avenue, Railroad Avenue, the existing Blacksmith Square, with then some areas designated as envelopes where the cultural facilities would be located. Again, this shows the outline of where those cultural facilities would be located. And then similarly, for the commercial uses, designating where those commercial uses would go in three areas, fronting Livermore Avenue and then up on the northern end, sort of extending the plaza and commercial off of Blacksmith Square with a little bit of frontage on Railroad So back to the staff recommendation regarding the stockman's offer, there are more details on that, those are in your staff report, so we would recommend that you adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the first amendment to the agreement that's in your staff report, again, to lift that restriction on the Civic Center property and allow that housing to be located down there in exchange for an easement and a park on the downtown property. And then actually grant the easement that we just showed you on the screen, and then authorize the city manager to take all necessary implementing actions and transaction steps to make sure that deal is consummated. Some of the next steps that would be associated with the Stockman's offer would be to prepare a downtown-specific plan amendment, to authorize the land uses, and then conduct environmental review for those. We would issue a number of RFPs for the different components, including a landscape architect to actually design the park in a finer-grained manner, an RFP for to actually design the park in a finer-grained manner, an RFP for a commercial developer to acquire land and construct a new commercial, same as for an affordable housing developer to pursue affordable housing on the Pacific Avenue site. And then also RFP for the design, development, operation, and maintenance of the Black Box Theater and the Science and Society Museum. So also, following up on your direction, or our recommendation that is, for the east-west street, parking structure in the southwest corner of the site and surface parking next to the southwest garage. I'll come back to that slide in a minute. The next steps for that would include moving forward with the planning and demolition of the buildings on the various sites to make way for temporary parking, and then facilitate construction of southwest parking structure and design of that east-west street. Again, we prepared a downtown-specific plan amendment to incorporate those uses, and then prepare an actual designer view application for your review and consideration. And before we get to the next component of staff recommendation, we'll just take a look at some of the phasing with both of the concepts here. And again, the idea is to provide parking during the duration of all four phases. In Phase 1, we would start with, related to parking, with a southwest garage, the I Street surface lot, and then other temporary parking lots on the west side to make sure those are more efficient and add parking. And then we'd also commence with the hotel and its underground parking. In Phase 2, we would begin with the south-central surface parking lot, and also the parking in the east-west street and the parking along that street. We'd also begin installing the park and plaza, and also the commercial uses around the Stockman's Park. Phases 3 and 4 could be interchanged, depending on the market and timing and readiness. Those, in terms of parking, we would have the surface lot underneath the Science and Society Center. Under the west-side hotel concept, the west-side apartments would go, or would start. And also the, excuse me, the parking, which would be underground for the west-side apartments, would start along with all of the west-side apartments. Black Box Theater and Science and Society Center are contemplated going in that phase as well. And then the final and fourth phase, we would look at all of the apartments in the east-side concept, and then the I Street Garage or expanded I Street surface lot. Again, those are options, and by the time the parking at the I Street is necessary, we could consider a structure or surface parking. That option would remain open at that time for consideration then. We would also have the east apartments in the west-side concept. Fourth phase would also have all of the apartments for the east-side concept, and then the east apartments for the west-side hotel concept. Lot of directions there, fairly tough to follow in text, but the concepts should tell that story a bit more clearly. Hotel location is one that we would seek direction from you this evening. And if the council were to move forward with that, we would continue our negotiations with presidio companies on a more specific hotel location, and then bring, move forward the purchase and sale agreement, again, for your consideration, and then prepare a specific plan amendment to identify that particular project. Finally, regarding housing and our final component of the recommendation, if you were to get to there, we would issue an RFP for an affordable housing developer to move forward in, on affordable housing in one or more phases, and that component of the project, and then again, prepare a specific plan amendment to memorialize or establish those land uses. And so that does conclude our staff presentation. I do want to let you know that the Stockman representatives are present. They would like to address the city council on their proposed offer and also answer any questions you might have. Interfaith Housing is also here. They've been having conversations with the Stockmans and are also here to address the council. After you're from the Stockmans and Interfaith, your whole team here is available for questions. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Just to summarize what Steve said, I thought it was maybe useful to put this slide up one last time, to say that as staff and consultants, we know that you've got a lot on your plate, and it may be easier, rather than trying to choose a concept or work through all the details of a concept at once, we've thought that, in the way Steve already presented this, it may make sense for you to do this in four somewhat more bite-sized pieces, so that at your own discretion, of course, and after you've heard all the public comment, while you could talk about the concepts as a whole, if you desired to, you could talk about the Stockman's Association offer relative to the park, the retail, and the cultural facilities, give direction on that, actually take a vote on those items that Steve's shown you, and move those forward and have essentially put them aside. Then move next to the east-west street, the parking structure and surface parking, talk about those, give guidance on them, and get those buttoned down, and then come to the hotel, give guidance on that, and then come to the housing. That would perhaps be a more bite-sized way to do it than trying to do the whole thing and give guidance all at once. So that's why we put this together as four separate recommendations, four separate packages, and of course, it's at your discretion as to whether you want to do it that way or talk about the whole thing at the same time.
And that is, of course, after public comment.
Yes, absolutely.
And so now, if we could invite up the representatives from Livermore Rodeo Stockman's Association and Interfaith Housing.
Gentlemen?
Good evening. My name's Dave Finster. I'm the current president of the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association. This is Don Stasa. He's a past president and also a current director. If I could, I'd first like to start off by thanking the city council, Mr. Mayor, and all the staff, and that includes you, Jason, for making this process up to this point go pretty smooth. And it hasn't been an easy thing, but you guys have been real good to deal with, and we wanted to thank you for that. When we first started with this park, it's been about two years ago. Thank you to Lanny Thompson for that, because she's the one that initiated it all. We could not believe the broad range and diverse groups of people that were in support of this. And the reason I bring that up is we've got, the rodeo association obviously is behind it, we've got ranch and community behind it, we've got business owners behind it, the science communities behind it, the Shakespeare Club, wine growers, I'm not sure if I mentioned them, and there's a lot of other groups that are also behind it. And the reason I bring that up is when we talked about what kind of park we wanted, we wanted a community park, and a diverse park where the whole town could go and enjoy it. And I think up to this point right now, we are getting very close to that, providing you guys do your job and vote this in. But I think it's great for the whole community that we have a park like this to where people can go to play or they can go to dinner. There's going to be something down there for everybody in this town. Don, did you want to talk anything about the 1962 agreement? Do you want to elaborate on that? I don't want to hog the mic.
Yeah, I'd like to say that another group that's very interested in is the veterans and the people that have served in armed services in defense of our country. I think it's important that every city recognizes them, and we've been lacking doing this. I also think that it's important for our community to realize the roots of this town. The roots of this town are agriculture. The rodeo brought this town to prominence throughout the nation. Livermore Rodeo is recognized as one of the biggest rodeos in the whole United States, and I think it's important that the people that live here realize the history of this town. The amount of people that, ranchers and farmers and regular town kids that were called to war, they went to war, and it's never ended. It's the same throughout all of the battles that we've had to fight in this country, and I think it's important to recognize them, and I think we'd be doing a disservice to ourselves if we don't do this.
Thank you, Don. A couple of other things on it. If you could get this done in a reasonable timeframe, I think this would be great, because we're coming up this June on 100 years of rodeo in this town. And what a better way to celebrate this town's rodeo of 100 years with the opening or the groundbreaking of a park. So we think that would be also a great thing for the community. That's about all I got off the top of my head, so I'm ready for the questions.
Well, thank you very much. I'll ask you to questions in a second, but I just want to say, Mr. Stasa, Mr. Finster, thank you very much for your patience, and I agree with you, this is very exciting. And as I pointed out, Livermore and Mendenhall were both Stockman.
Yes.
And this is a longstanding tradition in this community. And in the original agreement, 62 years ago, it talked about a large, open-space park and recreational area. And this is exactly what I see that is part of your vision going back 52 years. So questions for the Stockman at this point?
Not a question, but I would like to recognize Mr. Stasa, because when we were in a meeting and we were talking about all the issues of trying to get the housing and the parks and all of that, and when he said that the park didn't have to be at the end here of the street, that was the key that kind of broke a huge logjam and enabled all of this. So I just want to thank him for that out-of-the-box thinking that really made the difference.
Thank you.
Questions or comments at this point?
The only comment is, this is such a no-brainer of a decision, and I admire both the staff and the Stockman for working together so hard to make this happen. When you can, you know, park downtown, which is what I've been looking for for dozens of years, it seems like, as well as children, new residents checking out Livermore's history, how we got here. And believe me, so many people in the audience here have been able to school me a little bit about the parts that I've missed. And then we realize we're getting affordable senior and veteran housing out of Pacific. It's just, how do you say no to that? You know, it's fantastic.
Yeah, it's a win-win for everybody, we feel on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Great, thank you very much. Okay, and now, thank you, Mr. Finster.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Stasa, thank you very much. You said we had a presentation from Interfaith Housing as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Lanny Thompson?
Good evening. As the president of Interfaith Housing, I would like to express our board's sincere thanks to Mayor John Marchand, Vice Mayor Bob Warner, and City Housing and Human Services Manager Eric Uranga for listening to our pleas for property on which to build much-needed apartments for low-income seniors. We are also especially grateful for the cooperation of the Livermore Stockman. The Stockman have been waiting since 1962 for the park they were promised when they deeded 33 acres to the city to create our Civic Center, and their willingness to accept a downtown park has made it possible for the remaining bit of those 33 acres to be used for affordable housing. This looked like, as Bob Coomer said, a no-brainer, but there seemed to be opposition from residents focused on alternative plans. So in November, I wrote a petition asking the council to consider a Stockman's Park downtown, and we ultimately gathered more than 600 signatures. Later, a coalition of disparate groups, Dave mentioned some of them, wine growers to scientists, seniors to 30-somethings, composed an expanded petition, and they have collected another 800 or so signatures from people who support our plan. And yesterday, the Administrative Council of Asbury Methodist Church resolved to support our petition too. This year, Interfaith Housing will be marking the 50th anniversary of its incorporation. It would be wonderful if we could celebrate it by breaking land on a new complex to complement the three communities we have already built in Livermore. Our Hillcrest Gardens, Vineyard Village, and Arbor Vista senior communities have a total of 207 subsidized one-bedroom apartments, but we currently have almost 1,500 applications, which results in a five-year wait for a vacancy. Interfaith Housing's All Volunteer Board of Directors, which is made up of representatives from local Catholic, Episcopalian, Jewish, Lutheran, Methodist, Presbyterian, and Unitarian congregations, is itself an awesome example of what members of disparate groups can accomplish when they are working together toward a common goal, which in our case is to keep grandpas and grannies like me off the streets. I'm a relative newcomer to Livermore, moved here some 12 years ago, but I do care about the design for our downtown area, and I congratulate our councilmen on their efforts to get input on various components from a broad sampling of residents. Way, way back in the previous century, I majored in classical archaeology and saw how important the Agora in Athens and the Forum in Rome were to the vitality of those cities. I'm very eager to see a central area in Livermore where people can congregate, exchange views, and just relax and play on the grass. Last weekend, I saw Tri-Valley Repertory Theater's excellent production of 1776, the musical. And while I watched the Second Continental Congress struggle to achieve unanimity, I realized that, in a way, Livermore is currently a microcosm, okay, maybe a nano-cosm, of that polarized assembly of representatives from the 13 colonies. My great-great-great-great-grandfather, Benjamin Franklin, was among that herd of cats, and I think he would say, "Let's all pull together and get this thing done."
Wow, thank you very much. 50 years, Interfaith. The Interfaith Housing has been an amazing success, and the fact that different faith-based groups came together and made that happen, and over 200 housing units, that's incredible. And it continues to go on, and it continues to be a remarkable success. So congratulations for the tremendous efforts that that volunteer board has done over the generations, actually. So thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Interfaith at this point? Okay. Questions for staff? Councilmember Carling?
I didn't have any particular question. I just wanted to make a few comments. I think we've reached a milestone, and I would say we've been working at this for longer than eight months, as the mayor mentioned. I think I'm in this position largely because of the downtown, the way things started with Lennar some time ago, whether or not you agree with that particular plan or not. But I think we've reached a milestone, and I'm looking forward to what happens the next few days. But I also wanted to thank David Early and his Placeworks team. I think they've done a remarkable job. I think Steve Stewart and his leadership with the staff has also done an excellent job pulling all this together. And frankly, the material that we got as a council, and you probably reviewed on the website, is just, I think, an excellent summary of where we are. And I particularly liked the phasing blobs on the charts that they put out. That was very, very helpful for me. And of course, I want to thank all the citizens and folks in this community, whether you're here tonight or have participated in some of the other outreach programs previously and those that are watching at home tonight. I appreciate all the time and the energy that you've all put into this. The process, this outreach process, was always about to facilitate feedback from everyone as much as they wanted to participate. And I think the process worked extremely well. We've gotten all kinds of information, not just through the formal process that David Early and his team developed, but also, as the mayor mentioned earlier, I think we've all, meaning the five of us up here, have been swamped with emails and comments, and certainly I've met with several, almost... mayor mentioned earlier, I think we've all, meaning the five of us up here, have been swamped with emails and comments, and certainly I've met with several, almost, I've met with anybody that's wanted to meet with me to discuss the downtown, plus all those sort of ad hoc meetings that you have with people at various and sundry locations throughout the city, and various times that I've met with friends and others over the last several months. So, I think, speaking for myself, you know, I've gotten a ton of information even beyond what we've been able to collect in the formal outreach process. And certainly things like parking, the character of the community, and Blacksmith Square, and the open space have been primary on people's minds, as Mr. Early showed earlier, but also the hotel and the housing, particularly their locations, are also important, and that's something that we're going to get to. And I hope you recall, I hope everybody remembers that the city has a debt to pay to the housing program, and that is going to have some influence on how we, as a group, think about this. And so, please keep in mind that we do, the city does have a debt to pay, and some of the affordable housing will help alleviate some of that debt. So, again, I'm really looking forward to participating, or you all participating here in the next few minutes. One of the things I would ask, you know, if you have a particular thought about housing or hotel, I think it'd be interesting to tell us why you think that, and not just demand that it has to be one place or another. I mean, one of the things that's important to me is why people have reached some of these decisions. And so, if you can, if you think about it, if you have a particular why, I would appreciate hearing some of this. So, again, thanks to all the folks that have worked so hard over the last several months, getting the information, pulling it together, and summarizing it for us tonight, and I look forward to hearing what everybody has to say this evening.
Well, I like you have been drinking a lot of coffee, meeting with a lot of people, because people have expressed concerns or wanted to talk, and when people want to talk, I want to listen. So, I've been drinking a lot of coffee lately, so just to meet with coffee, so it's good.
I gotta have the coffee.
Yeah. I don't drink caffeine. It's not a pretty sight.
I live off of it.
Any other questions or comments at this point?
Sure. No, I just couldn't agree more with Councilmember Carling. You know, just let's get into some of the reasoning, why we're pointed a certain way, because that's the part that, through my many cups of coffee over the last several weeks, we've been able to get closer. When you're face-to-face with people, it's just so much easier to get a real understanding of how we're going with each other, rather than through emails and letters and things. When we talk face-to-face, things get done, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that with so many of you. So, let's go.
I'd like to second all the comments and also add that I have appreciated all the meetings with people over the last, I don't know, since November. I'd also like to compliment staff. Over the Christmas break, many times I would call them, and I would get the message that they're out on vacation, and yet I find that they've passed on vacation opportunities to work on this. It has been a tremendous amount of work in such a short period of time. And I'd like to go even further back. We've been talking about this for 20 years. There have been various starts and stops to this process, and I feel that we're very close. Pastor Kim over at Asbury, she had a sermon around Christmas time about the headwinds in life and tailwinds in life, and I feel that we're in the tailwind process of our downtown, and we're headed for the home stretch. So, I'm very enthusiastic about this. I think we're close. We're closer than we ever have been before, and I look forward to everyone's comments tonight. And speaking of which, I wanted to ask Mr. Early and staff a couple of questions, hoping to set a little bit of a framework for this evening. In terms of the open space on the current two concepts, how does that compare to any other concept that we have seen so far in terms of acreage? I don't recall during the outreach phase of talking about the open space in terms of 3.5 acres. That, I believe, is the most that we have seen out of any of the concepts, and also pointing out the Stockman's Park is almost a full acre of green space. I think that's very important also to highlight, that no other concept that we've heard so far, whether it's through the process or outside of the process, has talked about a full acre. If you include the area for the Black Box Theater until it's built, it is over an acre. So, Mr. Early and staff, if you can confirm that, I think it's a very important point. We saw through the public outreach process, and we asked people to list things in priority, open space was a number one.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that, and Councilmember, you're absolutely correct about that. The numbers we have are that the Stockman's Park actually is 1 1/2 acres in both alternatives. That includes almost a full acre of just green space, grass area, as well as hardscape area and the area around the Black Box Theater. So, 1 1/2 acres total, and both concepts have a total of four acres, 4.02 and 3.96 acres of total open space, which is far more than any of the previous four concepts that we looked at in the past. The past four concepts had a maximum of 2.71 acres, and one was only 2.05. So, you've got almost a doubling between 50 and 100% more open space in these two new concepts relative to the four concepts that we looked at before.
I also subtracted the private open space, because my theme throughout this entire process is designing something for the residents, a number one, priority number one. Hotel guests, retail, everything else is secondary in terms of who we should be focusing on with this project, and we heard open space, open space, open space, and I believe that we're getting very close to maximizing the open space on the site. The other question that I had, and this is something that has also been talked about, people are kicking around the idea of a potential for moving residential over to I Street instead of a parking garage. Now, just taking a quick look at Google Maps, it looks like the setback that you need from the railroad tracks, looking at all the other existing developments, does that pretty much preclude putting any residential along I Street? I mean, if you ignore the setbacks, it might be great. If you're late for the ACE train, you can kind of jump out the window to catch the train. I think I've seen pictures in other countries where people actually ride on top of trains going to work, but we're not at that point yet. But I was just wondering if I could get that confirmed, that there is a large setback that you need from the train track.
Your downtown specific plan includes a 75-foot minimum setback from the edge of the right-of-way, and that's to deal with essentially vibration, while you can deal with noise through windows and other things. At that level, the vibration becomes that that you can deal with through building materials. So, we don't allow residential buildings in the downtown specific plan to be built closer than that.
So, literally because of the vibrations?
Yeah. So, in answer to your question, that would take up a significant portion of the property that the city already owns. We own the portion closest to the railroad tracks on I Street.
Okay, so we own closest to the businesses, and the concern there is literally the vibration through the house. So, almost similar to Mary Poppins when the guy's firing off the cannon, they all have to grab everything, because it's
If you've seen old movies where the L train comes by the window, yeah, we want to avoid that sort of thing.
Right. That's why we have setbacks. Okay, thank you.
Admiral Boone.
Yes, all right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Okay. First of all, I'd like to say that, you know, as always, the staff does a superb job on the packages. I mean, all the years I've been here, it's always been wonderful, and this particular one, I think, you know, outshines them all. It's a lot of work, and I really appreciate it. And in addition to all of the coffee, I don't know how many cellphone batteries I've drained because of all of it. There's been a lot of interaction, a lot of hard work. It's amazing. And so, as you read through the package, you know, it's kind of hard to, unless you're really, like we are, and get into it, it's hard to put it into perspective. And Councilmember Spodowski started to get into that, and the thing is, the city designs, which you just heard, have almost twice the open space of the designs and of the best design and outreach with respect to the amount of open space. This is almost twice. But the other thing to kind of keep in mind here is look at the costs. If you look at that design I'm referring to, it penciled out at nearly $48 million, okay? And when you do an apples-to-apples comparison with what we're talking about here, and you get your mind wrapped around where the underground, parking for the hotel and all of that, the number, I believe, is $36 million. So, what we're talking about here is that the city plans, you know, it's 36 versus 48. That 48 is 33% more expensive, and it's half of the open space. So, we have really done a wonderful job here. So, I want to commend staff for what's going on. Just, you look at all the numbers and everything in the package, but that one ratio will put it in context. So, we have a great design. I think we could maybe tweak it a little bit more, but it's not going to get that much better, because we have, they've really worked hard. The other thing I'd say is, why is this? And the key to why this is true is because we are allowed to, if we do the Stockman's Park. That is why we have so much open space. That is why this is such a better deal. And then, when you actually get into the numbers on the operating costs and everything else, and you drill into it, there's about 200K per year for the park. But that's not really incremental, because as you heard, based on that agreement from 56 years ago, we were obligated to build a park. So, the fact, we have, so the capital costs, first of all, for building a park are not incremental in this deal, because we're supposed to do it anyway, and the operating costs for that park are not incremental compared to what we had to do. I just want to put it into perspective. So, what we're talking about here is really, really good. The other thing that I wanted to pursue, you saw the chart on the phasing, and also wanted people to realize that the bulk of what we're talking about doing here is with respect to the parking structure and the streets. That's where all the money is going, not on all the rest of this stuff. So, just want to make sure, as people prepare their public comments, that they understand what we're talking about. And I might ask Ms. Sheets as to what the numbers are with respect to the phases, just so you kind of know.
Certainly. So, for the first phase of the project, which is basically the park, I'm sorry, the first phase of the project is the southwest parking garage, and the portion of the east-west south street, east-west street, and the hotel was a $28 million piece of infrastructure. The second phase of the project is the Stockman's Park. The rest of the east-west street, that's approximately another $4 million worth of infrastructure. And then, we have the cultural facilities and the residential in phases three and four, which are another $600,000 for the cultural facilities, and about $6 million, $4 to $6 million for the final phase, which is the parking at I Street, whether it's expanded surface lot or garage.
Right. Now, I just want to pursue that. In the first phase, as you pointed out, it would be a surface lot up there on I Street, and the approximate cost to do that is about $1.4 million.
Correct.
Now, in the latter years, and I'm talking in the latter years, when we might have to consider putting a garage there of some sort, then it's an extra like $5 million. But that's way out there, and that's only for 134 spaces. If you wanted to go somewhere else for 352 spaces, you're a lot more money. Now, one of the other things that I think it's important to understand, because we talked about the Affordable Housing Fund, and it's not a debt to the Affordable Housing Fund. It's actually, the land was purchased with that, so the fund actually owns this stuff, so it's not a debt. However, if we were to, at some point, say that the land next to the bankhead is for a garage, then not for the housing, that triggers a $5 million payment from the general fund to the Affordable Housing Fund. Is that not correct?
So, the general answer to your question is, we need to find an appropriate space to place all of the affordable housing on these sites that we control. The logic behind the Stockman's deal, of course, is that we're not permitted to put housing on the site here in the civic center, and by using this deal, we're able to put a portion of the housing there. Ultimately, the remaining 130 units to satisfy essentially what the purchase price, needs to be placed somewhere on those east or west sites. While we're in the development process, we have argued that essentially the fund owns those sites and is going through a development process, much like any other developer would. Once the decision is made, and there's sufficient number of units there, you're good to go. If not, then you ultimately need to repay that fund, because that fund bought the property for a very specific set of purposes.
So, that's kind of a way of saying yes.
It's a way of saying yes, like a long way of saying yes.
Not exactly.
But because You have to find a place for the 130 units on the east or the west.
So, it's important, because this gets complicated. But the basic point is with what Councilmember Spodowski pointed out, the land that we currently own on, next to the railroad tracks, is not good enough for housing. So, if you were to designate the land within the sites that we already own for some purpose other than housing, so that we can't fit the amount that we've already designated for that there, that triggers the payment to the fund. And the reason is, we don't have any other land identified. So, just want to make it clear. So, as people start making comments about other schemes, just understand that. Then, I guess what I'm saying is, if you're going to suggest that, come up with a $5 million check. So, that's it. Again, thank you for the, this is a fantastic staff report, and I really, I mean, we always talk about reading the financial report, which is put together, and that's good, but this one is really worth understanding. All of those who want to engage seriously on this issue downtown need to read this report and really understand it, and we're all available, the council and the staff, to go through the details and go through the pros and cons of the different options.
Okay, and just, I want to underscore, everybody's talked about the tremendous amount of work that's gone into this, both from members of the council and also from the staff. And I have emailed the staff at 11 o'clock on a Saturday night with the intention that the first thing Monday morning, they're going to see that, and they're going to answer me. I get a response back at 11:30 on Saturday night. I began prefacing, you know, putting in the subject line, "Do not answer until Monday morning," because the staff, we're up here, obviously, we're passionate about what we do. We wouldn't do this otherwise. But the staff is also passionate about what they do, because they want, they're taking direction from the council, and they want to absolutely do what is best for the community. This is why they do it. This is where the satisfaction is. It's being actually able to put something together that really is remarkable. And this has been, yeah, this has been going on since 2004, when I was on the General Plan Review Committee. It's been going on a long time, and to actually see this evolve the way it has, the tremendous amount of public input, and thank you for that, thank you for being here, for providing that comment, for taking the time and for caring about the community to provide that input, that really has been a remarkable experience. And to the extent where people can keep an open mind and look at the facts, this whole concept of alternative facts is just, I was in Washington, DC last week, and that was, sort of, all sort of came in. It was scary. But really, to analyze all of this information, this is tremendous amount of information to bring together, to synthesize, and then to take that, as Mr. Finster pointed out, so many different groups have come together on this. It's not just a single group. It's not just some evil developer that has this idea that they're going to take over the town. You laugh. I mean, so I've heard this. But no, this is what we, as a community, are bringing together, and it's all different groups. It's not a single group that has, that they know what's best for you. It's that everybody's come together to work on something that is going to be successful, and it's been a phenomenal process. And thank you to all of you that have been a part of this, and we're still listening, and we're going to listen tonight, and we're going to continue to work with the community until we finally get this thing moving. So, any other questions or comments at this point? Okay. Councilmember Carling said, "In the next few minutes," we'd be talking about that, that we'd be getting to work in a few minutes. So, I have about 70 cards here, both here and out in the multi-service center. I'm going to call three names at a time. here and out in the multi-service center. I'm going to call three names at a time. Three minutes each, we're talking about over 200 minutes. But, there were a lot of people that really appreciated, the last time around, the fact that they were given the full three minutes. So, I don't want to suddenly throw a wrench in the works and say that you can't have that. We certainly want to hear from everybody. We haven't been going through this in, more intensely, for the last eight months, with the idea of we're going to cut anybody short. So, three minutes. If somebody pretty much says what you said, you can just say, "Yeah, I agree with them." Otherwise, we want to hear what you have to say. And, we will be here and continue to take comments. So, if you do have to leave, if you can't hang around, send us an email, and we will have your comments kept in the record, absolutely. I know for myself, I read all the emails, and I respond to them. So, and, I know the council, we don't have a secretary that does this for us. We're up there doing this ourselves. So, I'll read three names at a time. So, if you're out in the multi-service center, you'll have three minutes, or excuse me, nine minutes to get over here, and we've got the pathway lit up. So, with that, let's get to business. Okay. So, first speaker is Evan Branding, Steve Goodman, and Jacob Anderson. Mr. Branding.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. Today, my name is Evan Branding, and today I'm speaking on behalf of Build Downtown Now, as well as as a member of the Unified Group. I'm here representing 800 people who signed a petition, saying that they support the Stockman Deal, they support seeing affordable housing built, they support seeing this done quickly and efficiently, and we all want to see the best downtown possible. With the signatures I have with me, plus the signatures that were signed for Interfaith Housing, we are looking at 1,400 people who have signed on to say that they want to see the most beautiful downtown possible, that they want to see open space, housing, and a hotel all built, that they want to see something that is reflected by the plans that have been made by the city and the staff. We appreciate all the work that you have done. We appreciate all the effort that has gone into this, the time, money, hours spent away from your families, hours spent on the phone and meetings. We know how hard this has been to get to this point. But, we now sit in front of two plans. Both plans are gorgeous. They are excellent plans that meet the goals of both the city, as well as the residents. There are people who will speak against these plans tonight, I am sure. However, I want to remind you that thousands of people have stepped out and said that they support what you are doing. People who have stood in line since 4 o'clock today to be at this meeting, to come out and tell you how much we appreciate the work you have done. We want to see this finished now. We want to see this built. We don't want this to languish for another five, 10 years, 20 years even. We want to see a park that we can enjoy. We want to see housing for our neighbors, for our friends to live in. A hotel where our families can come and stay. We want to see this happen, and we want to build downtown now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branding. And, thank you, everybody. You pay attention, you remembered to raise your hands. So, thank you very much. I do sincerely appreciate that. Steve Goodman, with all your spare time now.
Yes.
Jacob Anderson and Asa Strout. Mr. Goodman.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Councilmembers and staff. Although I've been a very public person, I've avoided commenting on the downtown plan until now, because I feel it's too important, an issue not to share how I feel, and because there have been too many negative and misleading comments that I've heard about this issue. First, I want to say, as a former elected official, I know how hard it is to please everyone. That being said, I believe the City Council has done a good job of soliciting public input, and has been fair in the planning process. Contrary to what some may say, I think all the City Council and the mayor are trying to provide the best plan that they can give, given the physical limitations and the many, many varying options. To those who do not like the two plans, just because they don't contain everything you said you wanted, it doesn't mean the City Council and the mayor were not listening to you. Are the two plans perfect? No, far from it. They represent a compromise of opinions. Do I like everything? No. But, these plans are doable, and I believe there's even room for modifications. If we wait for the perfect plan that everyone loves, then we will do nothing. You know, I've lived in Livermore for over 60 years. Friends ask me about my hometown. I say, "In Livermore, we have ranchers and cowboys, scientists and wine, a unique blend of talents. Look at the seal up there. That's what Livermore is." These two plans allow for affordable housing off Pacific Avenue, and provide a park and monument to the Stockman and veterans downtown, as well as space for the culture and a place for educate, celebrate the science that has made Livermore famous. This is what Livermore is known for. The park and monument housing can be built sooner rather than later. Let's not just talk about it, let's do it. I don't want folks to refer to my hometown as a place where they have great parking, but housing's so expensive nobody can live there. Do not let a few folks with ulterior motives sabotage a plan for the majority of Livermore. I urge you to vote yes to accept the generous offer of the Livermore Stockman's Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Jacob Anderson, Asa Strout, Victoria Fierce. Mr. Anderson.
Before I start, I just want to thank you, council and city staff. Thank you so much. You guys put a lot of hard work, and we all really appreciate it. Thank you. Growing up, I was an athlete. I played football in high school, and, here in Livermore, and also in college. And, while I was an offensive lineman, there was one thing that I had to learn when training, and that was how to run. Not my favorite task, but we had to run 40-yard dashes. I had to learn to run a race. And, tonight, I stand here saying, "This is the start of your race. The time has come. This night is here. This is what our city has been working towards. You've trained for this. You've put in the hard work, and well more hard work is yet to come. This is the start of the race. You have been working towards this point, and now, it's the time to start. Our city has been working on this for a long time. A hotel was decided for downtown when I was in high school. To give you some perspective, that was almost 20 years ago. It's time to start. It's time to run the race. Do not slow down. We have unity amongst a diverse community. We have listened to thousands. You guys have listened to thousands. And, we want to see this downtown built. You have gotten their priorities. Now is the time. Time to run. Do not get distracted. Do not look away from your goal. I believe that you are ready. I believe we can build downtown now."
Thank you. Asa Strout, Victoria Fierce, David Kent.
Thank you. Today, I'm here as a member of a growing coalition of residents who want to see our downtown finally built for its current residents and future residents. I am also here as someone who grew up downtown and have seen our city change throughout the years. I am urging the City Council and staff to proceed and adopt the resolution accepting the Stockman's Rodeo Association. This allows the city to develop, to increase the housing units, while allowing the flexibility to put a large park dedicated to our rich heritage. For long-term residents like myself, who is also a son of a ranch hand, it means a lot to us. But, it also means a lot to our new residents, who will be able to see our heritage front and center, and act as a catalyst for them to learn more about our great city, instead of just somewhere where they moved five years ago. They can then move forward and learn about our great town. On top of the Stockman's Association resolution, we are urging the city to provide direction to the staff to move forward with the design elements presented today by Placeworks and staff. Deviation from these design elements will only delay the development of the downtown even further than we already have. As Jake had mentioned, the design was, for a hotel, was decided when we were in high school together. The main concepts presented fall within the outreach priorities, meeting most, if not all, of the housing requirements needed to meet our obligations for the state housing fund. 130 workforce housing units downtown, and another 100 senior housing units, will go a long way of keeping our community together. It keeps another teacher working and living in Livermore, and it keeps our grandparents in the town they grew up in and raised their grandkids in. To make things a little personal, as Carling had mentioned, it would also allow friends my age to stay in the city that they grew up in. Out of all my close, really close friends, or not all of them, many of my close friends, I'm one of the few that actually live in town. Most have had to move to Conquered or Martinez, because Livermore is just too expensive now. So, these concepts do all this, while at the same time preserving the character, which is also very important to our town. As everybody knows, we can't have that many housing downtown. There'd be a riot on our hands. But, by allowing this park to go forward with the Housing Association, it creates a unified, agreeable plan that we can all get around as a community. To conclude, I think we can get this done long before 2025, before my daughter starts elementary school or middle school, whatever you're in at when you're 10. The momentum is there to start construction this year on Phase 1, and we fully support you in making sure that happens. Let's get built, let's get downtown built now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strout. Victoria Fierce, David Kent, Mike Madden.
Hi. I'm Victoria Fierce, California resident, with the California Renters Legal Aid and Education Fund. We are 501(c)(3) here to enforce housing law. And, to start, I want to say, this is a wonderful plan. I think it's really beautiful. I think it's great you're having a hotel and some housing built downtown. The exception to this, of course, is the park. You can't precondition affordable housing construction on a $500,000 park after swapping away affordable housing land that you bought with affordable housing money, especially when the land is a lot more than $14 million today. And, even if correctly assessed, $75,000 a unit is a joke. This East Mit that you're considering tonight puts up a difficult situation for the city of Livermore to try and figure its way out of. 2000, 2008, 2010, the land under the park was bought with money taken, stolen, from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and state law says it must be used for affordable housing. The East Mit mandates that the city build a park instead of affordable housing on the site. A park is zero units of affordable housing. It's designated as a catalyst site in your housing element, and SB 166, which was passed last year and is in force right now, requires that a city reallocate the affordable housing units to another site that's approved and zoned for that, within 180 days of your decision. If it's the city's intent to reallocate these units to land currently designated as unsuitable for housing, as defined in your general plan, which is currently for Civic Center, you'd have to modify the general plan, which means you'd have to submit your draft to the Housing Community Development Department of the state, at least 60 days in advance. So, it's pretty reasonable to assume that, one, the place that you're trying to put the new affordable housing out east is not suitable for affordable housing as it is right now. You have to have timelines when approving these things, and the state has to also approve your general plan amendment. It's not really difficult to demonstrate that the city of Livermore has no intent to build that affordable housing out there on the east side. It isn't difficult to demonstrate disparate impact that arises from allowing market rate development in this area, while affordable housing is intentionally removed from downtown and services that it has access to. Economic segregation, that's what this is. It's morally reprehensible, and California Renters Legal Advocacy and Education Fund is not afraid to find and employ legal remedies in our work to dismantle this segregation. Thank you.
Thank you. David Kent, Mike Madden, Carl Winty.
Hi. I'd like to echo what I heard from some of the earlier speakers, which is, congratulations to the city, to the council, to the staff, to Placeworks, for managing an extremely difficult process, but staying true to the process, and making it inclusive and diverse. And, I think, you know, the proof is in the pudding. And, the creation of these two concepts for us to look at, how it has impacted the numbers as it relates to the open space, to preserving the culture and the heritage of Livermore, to having a surplus of parking, all the things that mattered most. At the same time, honoring our obligation for affordable housing and repaying the affordable housing debt, I think is something that everyone in this room should be amazingly proud of. If they did the work, or if they just input it on the work, I think we've come an amazing distance in a year. And, I would like to respond to Councilmember Coomer's spot about rationale. I started as an east-side hotel person, because the hotel had been there for 18 years. We wanted to see it built. We'd finally had a developer who would build it. I haven't given up on the idea that we can get a consensus plan out of this community. And, I look at the plan, I like the west-side plan as it currently is concepted, because the massing of three smaller buildings is better than one large, when you look at our downtown and the relative size of the other elements. And, I believe that with some further realignment of the hotel, to please the community group, run it on the corner of L, but run it along railroad, so that we can take the rest of all this enormous open space, which we've now created, and use it as public open space, which isn't there on the east side, and to actually kind of contour it and configure it, so that we really get the connectiveness we want, have it flow harmoniously through the Stockman Park. And, the Stockman Park deal, you know, that was, that was the catalyst, that was the focal point of this city, because that is the elegant solution. It allows us to build affordable housing for seniors, and gives us this amazing open space, and the kind of downtown park that we can preserve the culture and heritage. I think a lot of east-side hotel people supported it, because they didn't want to destroy Blacksmith Square. That really embodies our culture and our heritage in this town. And, so, these designs, which preserve Blacksmith Square, they expand it, they allow it to encompass the Stockman Park, and to bring in the cultural assets. That is the elegant solution for this plan, and I think you should be applauded for getting it in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Mike Madden, Carl Winty, Lisa Trumovich. We've heard a lot of things that you've said, whether you actually said them or not.
Yes. My name is, my name is Mike Madden, and I'm here to speak for myself.
Very good.
Audible mayor and members of the council, I'd prepared a wonderful nine-minute presentation. But, here's what's left. From Tubbsville until tonight, there have been dozens of ever-changing plans and visions for the downtown. I sat in this very room, learning about streetscapes, and the need and desire for the door-window, door-window experience for pedestrians. The city has invested in the downtown with beautiful sidewalks, diagonal parking, flex zones, and other amenities. The first group to try to tackle the Lucky Site was from Southern California, who proposed Livermore Village. They were going to cover the entire site with condos, and not only their site. To them, property lines were mere suggestions, as they covered parts of our property with condos, eliminated trash enclosures that not only serve our tenants, but our neighbors as well. They ran out of money, and they were run out of town. The LVPAC then tried to move the large theater to the site, and the death of redevelopment agencies killed that one. More recently, we dodged a bullet on the Lanar-Trumark Beauty Contest, because one of the biggest reasons why Livermore's downtown has been allowed to flourish is that there are not many homeowners in proximity to the commercial district. The fact that people buy houses near airports doesn't always prevent them from complaining about the airport, if you know what I mean. Times change, plans change, things evolve. You do your best work, you explore all options. Doctors are taught, "First, do no harm." Our downtown needs to be addressed the same way. Livermore Village and Lanar were going to tower over the Ale House. There was very little thought or regard given to their alternative access, garbage, deliveries, keg storage, their back-of-house needs. The same holds true for the rest of the north side of First Street. First, let's do no harm. The plans on the table tonight are very respectful of businesses and property owners. They clean up the back of First Street with plenty of vehicular access and other things needed for businesses to thrive. There's plenty of onsite surface parking. That's what we're used to. That's what we expect. Do we need a new connector between L Street and Livermore Avenue? We already have one. It exists. It's beautiful. We have a pathway. It's called First Street. We want to encourage, and continue to encourage, pedestrian traffic on First Street, where the front doors and front windows are. We don't want, nor do we need pedestrians walking by dumpsters, past kegs, and boxes, getting in the way of delivery people, et cetera. getting in the way of delivery people, et cetera. If asked, my preferred location for the hotel would probably be the west. The east side is okay, too. It just looks as if there's more room on the corner of railroad now to give the hotel design maximum flexibility to be successful. I think the final decision of where the hotel goes should be made by the developer and his team. We owe them every opportunity to be successful. These are good options, they first do no harm, they actually enhance the buildings and the use of First Street, these plants provide open space and another park in the downtown. Rental housing is a much better option for our downtown than for-sale housing. Blacksmith Square might have to change its name to Blacksmith Village, something that I'd be very excited about. The Stockman's Organization coming to the table, it's cooperative efforts like this one that separate great, thriving communities from others. This is exciting, these are good plans, I urge you to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Madden, thank you very much. Carl Winty, Lisa Trumovich, Chris Chandler.
Mr. Mayor, council, again, profound thanks. I've learned a lot over the last eight council meetings, the committee before, and what is good government continues to bubble up, and what can we continue to learn? It is a process, and may the process continue. What we all agree upon, Stockman Square, thank you all so much, like Rocket, get her done. That Southwest Lot, we all agree, right? I mean, let's focus on what we can to keep this moving forward. The end of my last talk, right, I got into the last city council meeting, for anybody who's here, I'm sorry for not thanking staff, y'all are awesome, you're doing a great job, mean it, rock on. Mr. Alcala, I can't wait to hear your response for what the affordable housing law with that easement and the likes is, because we want this to be executable and hold up in litigation, hold up in court, needless to say. Last time, you know, I said, the lack of veracity at times makes me crazy. Now, does anybody see the, what was it, the Lie 2K, where they celebrated that Donald Trump was the first president within a year to tell 2,000 lies? That's our role model. Just kidding, it shouldn't be our role model. Fastest president ever? We should hold ourselves accountable, we are all of Livermore. Hold ourselves accountable for speaking truth. Now, you don't have to agree, let's disagree, and let's have discourse, and may discourse ring. And I said, there's three kinds of lies. There's lies, there's damn lies, and there's statistics. And knowing which one it is and who's saying what. At the end of the day, people have been lying to me, people have looked me in the eye and told me a lie. And it bothers me. People have said untruths about you, as councilmembers, in print and to my face. That bothers me. So I apologize for the fellow citizen doing that, and I implore the fellow citizens behind me to elevate above that. I help people accountable, I just asked a question, like, you just told me a lie and I don't buy it. They said, well, oh, that's just hyperbole. It's hyperbole. Like, if you're not saying it, it's like, speak your truth. Other ones said, well, that's just semantics. Hey, if you're lying, you're lying, so please raise above. There's other people that just flat didn't acknowledge it. Like, and that reminds me of that Shaggy song, right? Wasn't me. So, please, let's rise above. As a result of this, you know, I went back to studying and got into Dante's Divine Comedy, the Inferno, Purgatory, and Paradiso, and thought about all of those layers and how it goes. But at the end of the day, let's focus on the virtues that come out of paradise, of, you know, the fortitude, justice, temperance, faith, hope, love, prudence, to make us a better society. I did come up here with a bone to pick, and I was going to talk about the nine levels going down into purgatory. I literally was, like, I have it written out, because I am disappointed in our fellow citizens not being truthful and having integrity. So, let's move this forward, let's focus on that upon which we agree. We are all of Livermore, let's make Livermore the best place it can be. Thank you all so much for what you do, thank you for what you do, and I apologize for anybody that would speak untruths about you, who give your time, effort, to the city of Livermore.
Mr. Winty, thank you. Lisa Trumovich, Chris Chandler, Dale Kay.
Mayor, council, city staff, thank you for welcoming us today to give input on the downtown planning process and the two beautiful plans produced by city staff. Thank you. I'd like to address a couple of points that have come up in the many conversations we've had with each other as we collected the over 800 signatures in support of Stockman's Park proposal. Livermore Shakespeare Festival advocates specifically for housing in the Stockman's Park that would allow private investors to raise money for a black box in a building that also supports outdoor events and concerts. Cultural events bring a community together. But why does our 15-year-old, in the black, professional theater company need a venue when we have a beautiful 500-seat theater? Here's an analogy. There are many people who can afford a Lexus, they're beautiful. Wouldn't many of us here, you know, today, like one? But there are some of us who can't afford a Lexus, but we still need a car, so perhaps we look to buy the Subaru. Livermore Shakes and other groups need a space that is low-cost to run, a space that is sized to our modest needs, flexible to the diverse experiences that we envision providing for this community, a space to be our artistic home, our Subaru. We still appreciate the Lexus next door, but we can grow together with some of us in a smaller venue. Is it feasible? Yes. Pleasanton's Firehouse Theater is turning people away, they are booked all the time. Why? The smaller size allows for more participation. Filling our arts district will enhance, not compete, with what we have already started. Organizational growth means growing audiences. Programming aimed at a younger demographic helps to create audience members for the future. As opposed to competition, what arts organizations all over the country have found is, the pie gets bigger. When there is an arts district, more people participate, make more business for everybody, the arts, the restaurants, the shops, et cetera. The design and location of Stockman's Park is important. In Creating a Better World with Design by Michael J. Barron's, there's a quote, "For centuries, designers have understood intuitively that through their designs, they could affect how people feel and interact in the spaces they created. The design of the park reflects the collaboration of our unique citizenry and will facilitate healthy communications within our community in the future." As a resident and a representative of Livermore Shakespeare Festival, I applaud the city's efforts moving forward with the Stockman, Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association deal and the opportunity for Interfaith Housing Inc. to create senior affordable housing on Pacific Avenue. I look forward to celebrating the city council that honored this 55-year-old debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trumovich. Okay, Chris Chandler, Dale Kay, Rochelle Snedecor.
Mayor Marchand, council, and staff, I am Chris Chandler with the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association. Thank you for your service and for the months of effort, energy, research, dedication, and frankly perseverance regarding the development of downtown. Thank you for establishing and then continuing with the process to explore options, bringing in outside experts, engaging and soliciting input from the community. The process has worked. After being a part of the process you established, reviewing the two plans drafted by city staff, and discussing at the wine growers' board level, and while we still have a slight preference for placing a hotel next to the Bankhead and housing in the other location, we support either plan. What we do not support is another random, outside, third plan. The process has worked and has yielded two very good options. Again, the process has worked. On behalf of the staff, board, and members of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association, I am asking you to select one of the two plans this week so we can all move forward and embrace the new amenities and opportunities this development will bring. I still have a few minutes left, and one of you, bless you, had asked why either westside or eastside. So in my time that's left, the slight preference for the hotel on the east side is that it is next to the Bankhead Theater. That is a main thoroughfare, and as one of the experts in the process stated, it's an opportunity to have that as an iconic gateway there by placing the hotel there. It is across from Blacksmith Square. I have attended probably half a dozen wine tourism conferences in California, Texas, Virginia, and have always paid attention to sort of the layout and the walkability of where these conferences are held relative to the wine countries. In that instance, eastside or westside would still lend itself. I hope to be able to host a wine tourism and/or wine bloggers conference, which would lend itself to the east side in that the conference spaces would be adjacent and would make it perfect and accessible for any type of conference that we have. And finally, getting the hotel done, the Wine Enthusiast Awards have essentially become the Academy Awards for the wine industry. We aren't even eligible because we don't have an appropriate accommodations here. We work with all the hotels in the area, they're great partners, but to bring in writers, bloggers, tourists, and put them next to a Costco or staring at a freeway, we are way behind the times. We are continually getting left behind in so many tourism conversations that if we don't take advantage of this and take action now, we're really going to miss even more opportunities. Thank you.
Ms. Chandler, thank you. Dale Kay, Rochelle Snedecor, and Lenny Thompson, you already spoke, so you don't need to come back, okay.
Good evening, Dale Kay with Innovation Tri-Valley, and first of all, we want to applaud the city council, city staff, and David Early for the amazing work that you've done. We think that both plans are beautiful and that they're constructive, compelling, and empathic, which is very important. I also want to thank the citizens that have talked tonight so far. I've gone to city council meetings around the country, and so far, tonight is my favorite. So, thank you all for your passion, it's a fun meeting. Unlike many suburbs, we all know that Livermore is unique, it's a major job center, we have two national labs here, we have the beautiful wineries, we have a healthy startup community, we have the rodeo and the ranchers and the cowboys that were here tonight, we're incredibly lucky. And it's a city that embraces growth, but also its history, and we are blessed by that as well. But it's never going to be like it was 40 years ago, or 20 years ago, or 10 years ago, and we embrace that as well. So it's time to build that hotel that we've been talking about for so long, and it's much-needed housing, and thank you to the Interfaith Housing community for doing what you're doing. This is so needed all over the Bay Area, and proud to have it being built here. And also, we need to have, with, I think with the Stockman's Park, what we have is a seed for a cultural core that is going to be amazing. It will build everything else that we have in these gorgeous plans, so congratulations for that. It's time for Livermore, we think, and all cities, to demonstrate that it's time to care about the future, about those that come after us, and not just us, and these plans both show that. So again, thank you, I agree with Councilman Carling, I think we are hitting a milestone, and all we need to do now is move forward and build our downtown. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Rochelle Snedecor, and Mr. Stasa, you already spoke, did you want to come back? Or did you? Good, thank you. Simon Cohen.
So, Rochelle Snedecor with Livermore Downtown, and mayor, councilmen, good evening. One giant step closer to the next phase of downtown vitality. You've provided one of the most comprehensive community outreach processes that I have ever witnessed in Livermore, and I am not sure I've ever witnessed it in any other downtown community process in the state of California, so you should be very proud. This has been very intensive and very inclusive. Livermore's downtown neighborhood is a diverse neighborhood. Every socio-academic level, every major religion, sex, and major ethnic culture and interest is represented in the owners and workers in our downtown, as well as those who visit us, working side by side and together to build and sustain vitality. Thank you for respecting that all need a voice. Thank you for being a true government leadership team, nonpartisan, and working for all in Livermore. You have not discriminated based on a person's net worth, their address, their education level, their race, their cultural interests, or their age. You have shown true integrity by being our elected officials, represented by the people and for the people. Starting to sound like Carl, kinda. And you have committed to a sustainable and economically sound future for downtown and our residents from every neighborhood across the community. That's what our Livermore has been, our downtown has been built on, and we've been truly committed to. But don't let these compliments go to your head and get you too comfortable. Now we need to move forward. The Stockmans and veterans will get long overdue recognition, and to put it into perspective, I was born in 1962. Everything's aged a lot since then, so this has been a long wait. The affordable senior housing needs will get some assistance, and by their downsized move to a more comfortable living arrangement, housing will be opened up to the market for our next generation of families to thrive in. Blacksmith Square will not be torn out or overshadowed, and in fact, it will be expanded and better connected to the First Street shopping and dining destinations, with new incubator-sized artists and makers shop, and that's going to be a huge addition. Activated open space will be added, and Shakespearean local performance and gathering needs will be included, and science and technology will be celebrated. Some of our workforce will be housed, and not only serving our community, but providing economic input to our businesses. Visitors will have a beautiful boutique hotel experience, and yes, there will be parking, replacement, and addition. You listened to everyone, but like all great leaders, you could not agree with everyone. You had to understand every domino and how it affects the next one. My 86-year-old dad taught me, if you have everybody happy, you're accomplishing nothing. Believe me, I obviously accomplished some things because not everybody's always happy with me. Just, yeah. We feel confident that either of these plans will provide everyone something they wanted, but not everything they wanted. That is how you know you're on the right path. Our downtown will have something for everyone. Thank you.
Perfect timing, thank you. Simon Cohen, Brad Erickson, and Patricia Monroe.
Good evening, city council staff, and everyone who's here with this community. I want to thank all of you for all the work that's been done to this point. I started working at Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory in 1989, I've lived in Livermore since 2002, and everyone who's been involved in these concepts, whatever their perspective, has brought us to this point where we stand today. And you should all be commended for the interaction and the work to achieve what we have. And I'm truly impressed with what I've seen before me. When I first moved here, Livermore was not a destination city. It was not a place where many people would say, hey, let's go out to dinner, let's go to Livermore. Today, it is, in so many ways. Livermore has become this wonderful, thriving downtown community that is enjoyed by people from other cities as well. And I love the concept for the Stockman's Park, and my preference would be the eastside hotel concept. I feel that the hotel adjacent to the Bankhead Theater makes more sense, the synergy with the apartments on one end is more appropriate at the corner of L and railroad, and from the size of the hotel adjacent to the Bankhead, there is some commonality in the size of a large hotel in that location relative to the Bankhead. So mainly, the other critical facet, which you have all already seen from the surveys, is that parking is critical. Today, in Livermore, on any given, even Thursday evening, you drive to try and go downtown during the evening, and it's hard to find parking. So I understand why that is such a critical aspect to any plan, and I truly encourage and congratulate you for trying to ensure that there will be more than ample parking to enable those to come into town and find parking without having to drive around for 10, 15 minutes, which happens sometimes today. So please make sure that that is maintained in the design. So, and I love the phased approach, and the integrated design solution is a wonderful, wonderful situation. So sooner than 2025, you know, I know that's written down in the agreement, but I can't imagine that it would take that long to move forward, and please, build downtown now.
Thanks, Cohen. You know, you talk about Thursday evening, hard to find parking. It's hard to find parking on a Wednesday afternoon near the Yale House. Brad Erickson, Patricia Monroe, and I think it's Mike Casher, C-A-S-H-E-R, or Kastner? We'll get back to that. Okay, Mr. Erickson.
Okay.
Pardon?
Lily Kastner.
Wow, okay, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members and city staff. I am Brad Erickson, I'm the Executive Director of Theater of the Bay Area. It's a service organization serving theater companies and artists around the region. We have 300 theater company members, including the Livermore Shakespeare Festival and 2,000 artists that we work with. As you might imagine, I'm here particularly to talk about the theater and the cultural aspects of this really wonderful plan. aspects of this really wonderful plan. Last year, the California Arts Council commissioned the Otis Report on the Creative Economy. That report found that the arts and the larger creative sector around California amounted to nearly 8% of the state's gross state product, generating $270 billion in economic activity and creating some 1.4 million jobs around the state, both directly and indirectly. Now, what do those figures have to do with Livermore and with this project in particular? Western States Magazine recently published an article by Craig Watson, who was until recently the Arts Council's director, and that article pointed out how cities, large and small, across California have used the arts, and specifically, multi-use spaces exactly like the one that you are looking at, to spur vital economic activity in their city centers. The examples included not just large cities like San Francisco, but smaller communities around the state, cities like Grass Valley, and Winters, and Davis, and Culver City. In each of these cities, cultural venues like the ones in this project have spurred activation of city centers and have enhanced quality of life for residents and for visitors alike. This project is a model of those successful examples. This project would provide a unique mix of uses, including an intimate theater for professional, locally-produced theater and dance performances, an outdoor concert and event space, and in a center focusing on science. Each of these cultural spaces would be scaled to be of maximum value to artists and arts groups based right here in the Livermore area. The project promises venues that can be activated almost nightly, bringing a steady stream of customers to downtown businesses, enlivening streets, and adding to the energy of this city core. This project promises to add a vital and complementary component to Livermore's existing arts infrastructure, including the Bankhead Theater. The new facilities would bring in new arts groups and new audiences to downtown Livermore. What's more, these cultural facilities will provide an important new venue to the greater Bay Area art scene, providing the only facility of its kind in this particular part of our region. So I encourage you to adopt either one of these two beautiful plans that you've seen tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Erickson. Just to underscore, I had the opportunity to meet with Mitch Landrieu, who's the mayor of New Orleans, and he maintains that it was the arts that was able, that enabled New Orleans to come back from Hurricane Katrina. It was over $700 billion in, or sorry, $1 million in economic impact that really brought them back. So huge advocate for their in the arts. Thank you. Patricia Monroe and Lily Castner.
Mayor Marchand and city council members, my name is Patricia Monroe. I've been a Livermore resident for almost 30 years. I want to thank you. I want to thank the city staff. I want to thank placeworks for shepherding these two really fine plans to this point. You've worked really hard to ensure that all voices, not only the loudest voices, were heard. You've managed to meet the diverse needs of our community. Don Miller of Blessed Memory was a former mayor of Livermore. He was my mentor. He was passionate about Livermore. His goal was to preserve its unique qualities and to look out for its future. I share his passion. At his funeral, I learned that Don was the person who envisioned our fountains as public spaces. He imagined those fountains as places of beauty for all citizens. He saw children playing there. He saw families gathered around them. Some people were opposed, a waste of money. But now, well, anyone passing Lizzie Fountain on a summer's evening will see children laughing and playing in the fountains while people of all ages relax and watch. These fountains are Don's legacy to a city and a vision made real. In Stockman's Park, the city council has the opportunity to build another piece of Livermore's legacy to the future. It will become a magnet not only for families and children, but for all of the different groups that make up Livermore, and you've heard of them. You've heard them many times this evening, ranchers, and families, and children, and vintners, those in the arts community. As with Don's fountains, there are and will continue to be the naysayers, and I get it, change is hard. Nevertheless, I urge you to hold fast to the vision that we will achieve and the legacy you will leave. Please remember how truly remarkable it has been that so many groups have come together to develop a plan from which everyone will benefit. Now, more prosaically, east side or west side? East side or west side? Well, I drove down Livermore Avenue a few days ago, and I imagined the hotel on that east corner, and I could see how it would greet everyone to downtown. It was really very appealing to imagine. But really, I feel a little bit like an expectant parent. I might imagine that I wanted a boy or a girl, but all that really matters is a healthy baby. Here, too. Either plan will be fine. Let's go Livermore. Let's get it done. And I'll just hold her up, I guess.
Lily Castner.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and city council members. My name is Lily Castner, and tonight I'd like to tell you why you want Blacksmith Park now. I want, I don't.
It's okay.
Blacksmith Square to be overshadowed by a big building. I want to be able to play in Stockman Park with my friends and even make new friends. I want, I want the theater to be, to be built so we can have more plays at once, and I want it to happen soon, so I can enjoy it soon.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. That was very well done. Heidi Kasseff, Elizabeth Judge, Darcy Kent.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and city council members. I am a parent of teenagers who appreciate art and culture, a small business owner, and a volunteer who supports cultural groups in this city. Thank you, Mayor, and city council members and staff for admirably managing this process. As Leslie Nopez from Parks and Recreation said, "What I hear when I'm being yelled at is people caring really loudly at me." When I first moved here in 1994, I was not proud of my downtown. My children grew up going to the beautiful new library, attending Bankhead performances, and enjoying the then reinvigorated downtown. We are now very close to another quantum leap, and I think we are closer than we think. I came today to support the Stockman Park's plan, either one, at the center of the downtown with a park, small theater, and science center. This may be too late for my kids to enjoy, but I can't imagine a better gift to our city. There are so many cultural groups who cannot afford to rent the Bankhead, or it's simply too large a space for them. These groups will keep the downtown hopping during the midweek, provide space to educate and entertain our children, and create a vibrant space for us to gather. We all want to be very proud of our downtown. We all care deeply about this community and know that all of us here are caring loudly at you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Judge, Darcy Kent, Richard Langlois.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and gentlemen of the council and staff. Subsidizing this downtown site to the tune of $3 million annually is unrealistic. Given that the general public has felt ignored of late, it would behoove those wishing to make downtown a reality, to make it as attractive to the general public and as fiscally responsible as possible. The winery's East Side Hotel has a lot of limitations. This is not a big city like Philadelphia, where the Marriott had no choice but to locate next to an office building and frost all its windows. Hotels make the most money on weddings. Would you put your wedding reception where a third of your guests are located down the hall with closed-circuit TV? Or would you rather the reception spill onto a tented patio with a park nearby? Consider a railroad hotel where the best marketable views are of the hills. Success has a better chance, and more building options exist. The general public had housing at the bottom of the list, not because they do not want to help folks find affordable housing, but because they are fed up with the high-density housing that's happening all over town. They figured that at least on this prime location, they should not have to look at any of it, but that's not realistic. 130 units was supposed to look the same size as a hotel, but it has grown now to four times the size, so maybe smaller units, but on L would be helpful. Underground parking for the housing sites alone on the West Side draft amounts to $9,800,000. We could give Livermore teachers and first responders, Livermore teachers and first responders housing wage, plus a shelter for the homeless for that kind of money. I have a suggestion to enhance the monument for the Stockman Park. If you put the Stockman statue in the middle of a parcel behind two-story structures, we could drive all over town and never see it. Why not make it a real monument with its own light-colored, solid backdrop, so the horse really stands out? And put it on Livermore Avenue, where it could be a gateway to the park. I suggest a monument wall, beige concrete perhaps, at the Livermore Avenue edge of Stockman Park, with the statue on the Livermore Avenue side. The wall would hold plaques giving the history behind the reason for the monument, maybe even listing names of Livermore war heroes. This does make the monument more costly, but it definitely gives it the attention it deserves. Many citizens know nothing of the two nonprofits which have suddenly been assigned the most coveted areas of the site. Since they are not guaranteed realities, it is perhaps more prudent to locate them on an inside area rather than on the railroad avenue edge. Moving the Science Social Center just to the left or west of the Box Theater on the city's draft would locate it closer to the parking structure. Oh, is that so? How did that happen?
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yes, thank you. I have copies.
Please submit those to the city clerk, and then if you wanted a copy, us with an email as well.
Oh, thank you. I've already loaded your email already.
That's okay. I appreciate that.
Does that belong to the board? I can take one. Sorry.
Well, I already rattled off two names, so let's see. Okay, so we'll go with Darcy Kent, Richard Langlois, and they'll take a brief break.
I just want to thank you all, the staff, the council, mayor. You all have done such a fabulous job over the last year, bringing all these diverse ideas together and providing numerous ways for us to reach out and talk to you. You've created a plan that's for everybody, for young and old alike. At the core, the Stockman's Park, a one-and-a-half-acre tree-lined grassy area that people can actually play in and picnic in, was a brilliant exchange of development rights between the local rodeo association and the city, and I hope it goes forward. To allow affordable senior housing to move near Pacific, to move to Pacific Avenue in exchange for this downtown park is truly brilliant. There is ample parking, and at last, proper dumpster sites for the merchants. Blacksmith Square, truly one of the most special gathering places that we have in Livermore, is tripled in size and feeds out to the Stockman Park and Plaza. The expansion will have smaller spaces for family-owned retail shops and bistros with lots of outdoor seating. There is a stage at the end of the park for live music, and behind it, a space to build a privately-funded small theater for local dance, theater, and speaker performances, as well as public restrooms to support the entire park. Also on the plaza is a space for the Center for Science and Society that will support our local schools, teachers, and scientists. Both of these amazing projects will inspire the creative mind in us all, while celebrating the vital role that arts and science play in our community. They deserve your support. Everything in the design concept integrates well with broad tree-lined walkways to our beautiful First Street, to the Bankhead Theater, and a new hotel. Almost a third of the 8.2-acre site appears to be open space and still leaves plenty of room for affordable housing, which we desperately need. New market-rate apartments have not been built in Livermore for over 20 years, and affordable housing for our teachers, first responders, and hospitality workers is a critical need that promises to bring more vibrancy to our downtown while taking cars off the highways. It is such a rare opportunity to create an iconic downtown. It is even rarer for such diverse groups in Livermore to come together, but they've done it. The year-long planning process was a success. The city has drafted a plan that we will cherish for generations to come. I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Richard Langlois.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmen. Pleased to have the opportunity to speak for you today. First of all, I'd like to say, many of the features that have been described tonight, I'm very excited about. The Stockman Park, the housing, the hotel, the parks, all those pieces sound really good to me. But my concern, and I'd like to discuss tonight, is I'm really very concerned about the process the city has gone through to get to this stage. I think that your behavior as a group shows a lack of respect for the public and an unwillingness to take responsibility for your actions. Let me just give one example, and that is, on November 23rd, the council first heard the report by placework, excuse me, by placeworks, summarizing their view of the outreach process. And this was a very detailed report. I looked at the stuff on the website. It's a 59-page report, very thorough. The same evening, 70 individuals from the community came and gave comments and suggestions to the council. Now, I would realize that this is a tremendous amount of complex, controversial material for each of you to absorb and evaluate. I would expect a lot of discussion, debate, as to where to go. So what happened? When the council reconvened on November 29th to discuss this material, the first item of business reported in the minutes from this meeting is as follows, and I quote, "David Early, placework consultant, presented recommendations and processes for city council consideration, the direction." Further, by consensus of the city council, the following direction by category was provided." So placeworks set out a set of goals and recommendations, and that was accepted by consensus. A list of 45 different recommendations from placework were accepted lock, stock, and barrel, with no discussion, no modification, no additions from the public, and no vote. How could we think that the five of you individuals have your own individual ideas on this? It really sort of flies in the face of, we're taking in all this public input. Input came in, and within one day, boom, follow step by step the placework's thing. And so I really hope that in the future, you can take a much broader view of all the plans that have been proposed. Am I done?
You have a fifth thought, please.
Okay. And hopefully tonight, you will not lock yourselves into one plan without considering all the other major citizen plans that have been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langlois. Okay, should we take a quick break? And then after the break, we will have Alan Burnham, Brooke Witherspoon, and Jim Schmidt. So you guys are on deck. So get up, take a quick stretch. Okay, very good. Well, we're back for round two of this meeting of the Livermore City Council, a special meeting on January 29th. So part two, moving on, we're in the middle of public comment on the downtown, and our next speakers are Alan Burnham, Brooke Witherspoon, and Jim Schmidt. Mr. Burnham.
Yes. I'm Alan Burnham. I live very close to here. A few years ago, Livermore started down a path of building a lot of housing downtown to pay for the land acquisition costs. Most residents did not want that, but even well into last year, no one had faced up to how we were going to satisfy the affordable housing required by the in-lug fees used by the land. Fortunately, during the community outreach, an opportunity arose for what's now called the Stockman's Deal. It provides the financial means for both open space and cultural assets downtown and affordable housing nestled between two earlier such developments. The city concepts have more open space than any of the four concepts, as we heard, and it's now time to say yes to this opportunity. I'm pleased to see a science center as part of the proposed complex that celebrates Livermore's heritage in ranching, viticulture, science, and art. The Livermore Science and Society Center is so named because it aims to help the public understand the science behind the issues that affect us as understand the science behind the issues that affect us as societies and individuals. I must say, I really don't care whether or not Elizabeth Judge knows much about us or not. I don't know much about her scientific qualifications, but I suspect that the people involved have far superior ones. One topic each year will be explored through interactive and passive displays at various levels that speak to all ages and educational levels, from elementary school to PhD. Topics will be selected by local impact and interest. Examples might be science behind ranching and wine-making, energy systems, transportation systems, water systems, climate modeling, DNA sequencing and repair. All these topics are being investigated by people in the Tri-Valley, and I can't explain in three minutes why one should care if they don't already know. The city's conceptual rendering of the Stockman's Deal provides the land and space to do this correctly. We'll need spaces for buses, for school tours, and the plaza provides an inviting space for gathering and lunching. As is typical with all the museum tours I went on with my kids years ago. The Park and Plaza and adjacent businesses will provide foot traffic leading to spontaneous visits. The adjacent Black Box Theater will provide space for lectures too large for the Science Center itself, but too small and frequent to be appropriate for the Bankhead. The theater will also be used to explore the humanistic impacts of science through visual and performing arts. The adjacent park will be used to host science and technology events and fairs too large to fit inside the building. This complex is a wonderful opportunity for Livermore, and the Stockman's Deal is a great enabler. Let's do it. I might also point out that I have not really expressed a preference for an east or west-side hotel through all this time. I think the west-side has a little bit more flexibility. That is certainly, I think I have a small preference for that, but I really am not sure that it's that much. I think either can be done well. It's a question of just doing it well. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Burnham. Brooke Witherspoon, Jim Schmidt, Tamara Royce.
Good evening, council members, staff, and mayor. My name's Brooke Witherspoon, and I'm the owner of the First Street Ale House and proudly raising our future generations in this amazing town. I just wanted to take a moment to say that I am so encouraged by all the thoughtful consideration that has been put into the two plans that are being considered tonight. As a business owner, downtown property owner, and resident, I feel as though I have been listened to, respected, and valued throughout every step of this process. This project will have a significant impact on my business considering it is literally in my backyard, so I have tried to stay educated and involved at every stage. I can confidently say that no other plan has taken such a respectful consideration of the existing businesses and the desires and wishes of our community. I very much look forward to getting this process started and continuing the vision for our credible town. On a total side note, I heard many of you talking about how much coffee you've been drinking, meeting with the community, and I just want to point out that some of my best decisions have been made over a beer, so keep that in mind. Thanks.
Jim Schmidt, Tamara Royce, Lynn Sepala.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and Councilmen. I want to echo everybody else's praise for the council, the staff, the consultant, and everyone involved leading up to tonight, and especially everybody involved in the Stockman and all else for the breakthrough on the land swap. That's truly a breakthrough. So I want to use the remainder of my time to address the one big, not the only one, but a big question. What do we do with the parking lot at the Bankhead? So it's suggested it could be a hotel or housing, and another group has suggested a parking structure. Now imagine for a minute where the center of our city is and where is it moving to? The center is considered to be the corner of First Street and South Livermore. The Bankhead Plaza is a competing city center and growing, and the new Stockman's Park, I'm sure, will be another gathering city center, focal point. Now, if you draw a line from Lizzie Fountain to the Bankhead Plaza, and then over to the Bankhead, over to Stockman's Park, and back to Lizzie Fountain, you describe a rectangle, and I submit that the parking lot sits almost exactly in that rectangle. It's a valuable piece of property. It doesn't deserve to have a parking lot on it, and I don't think it's a blessed spot for housing. It needs something, and in such a central location, a boutique hotel could be a real tying together of the three other centers that I mentioned. It's kind of nice to come out of the show of a Bankhead or a movie and have a cocktail. No doubt they'll have a nice restaurant and a personable cocktail lounge. It's just kind of a piece of glue, I think, that fits better there than it would be clear over on L Street. So with that, that's my recommendation. I'll leave it all to you. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt, thank you. Tamara Royce, Lynn Sepala, Katie Marcel.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to thank you also and express what I think might be a way to resolve this in a way that works for everybody. So we heard from David Kent earlier tonight, and I think he had some comments that I think were very intriguing about ways to tweak this proposal. And even though everybody's saying you're choosing between the two plans, one of the things that you mentioned at the beginning is that these are concepts, they're not plans, and they're very tweakable, they're very workable. And really, I don't think that the two factions, if you will, are that far apart on getting this process to work out. What I liked is the idea, I do feel that the hotel belongs on the west side. Again, it's more flexible, and I think it allows for better flow and better utilization of the west half of the property. I don't like the idea of housing on the east side, and I don't like the idea of a hotel there. I would like to see parking there. I think that it's just a logical way to handle, you know, the needs of the Bankhead, and also it could be fronted by businesses, restaurants, what have you, to make it an attractive entrance in addition to having a parking garage on that site. But I'm hoping that you will consider, you know, flipping the hotel so that it could run along railroad, and putting the housing then along the other side opposite the hotel, and that still leaves a maximum of open space that allows people to, you know, really come in through the whole area and utilize it. There could be room for an art walk, or a, my preference, a, you know, a wine history walk, or different exhibits, things that, you know, could really make the space even better for the community as a whole. I like Stockman's Park. I like the idea of a cultural area in, you know, in that space. But I do think that we want to make it so that it's the best utilization of that space, and having the housing kind of in between the hotel and then the rest of the site just doesn't seem to make sense to me as a user, as somebody who might want to come through there. So again, I hope that we can get buy-in from everybody on this and that you'll take the time to, you know, make it happen in the next few weeks. It isn't that much more time that I think we're so close that we can get this done for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Sepala, Katie Marcel, Jean King.
Good evening, council, councilmen, staff, and citizen. Regarding the west-side hotel, I agree with David Kent. Moving the hotel closer to South Livermore Avenue is good, and placing housing in the center of the entertainment district right next to the Bankhead Theater creates problems for the people who want to go to bed early and have some peace and quiet. I hope we don't have a 10 o'clock curfew because of complaints from noise from Blacksmith Square on one side and the Bankhead Theater and the plaza on the other side. Instead, I agree, putting a parking structure and retail on the east side of Livermore makes sense. If you look at Walnut Creek on Locust, there are retail in front of the parking structure, and you don't even know there is a parking structure there, so I think that's a great place to have a retail and parking place. And finally, parking and retail make sense where noise from a successful and vibrant downtown is not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sepala. Katie Marcel, Jean King, Kevin Leiler.
I'm Katie Marcel, and I'm here in support of the Stockman Agreement. I want to say thank you to the mayor, the city council, and the city staff for engaging in a long and thorough dialogue with the community regarding the next phase of downtown development. I've been a downtown resident for 15 years. I'm a mother of two. Both of my kids are at public schools in Livermore, and I want to thank you for including our youngest citizens in the planning of our city center with the Stockman's Park, the Science Center, and a Black Box Theater. Again, I'm a downtown resident, and I want to thank you for working so hard to make sure that the next phase of development is usable for families, accessible, and complements the fantastic downtown we already enjoy. I'm a former employee of Livermore Downtown, Inc., and so I want to say thank you for continuing to revitalize our downtown and for continuing to implement the downtown-specific plan. I, along with our mayor, was one of the founding members of Livermore's Commission for the Arts, so I thank you for including cultural amenities in the draft concept and furthering the priorities set in the Arts Alive Cultural Arts Master Plan. I'm also the wife of a high school teacher, and I can relate to and appreciate the struggles, even though I'm not under 40 anymore, of our Under Forty Brain Trust as they are priced out of their dream of living and working in this amazing community. Thank you for including workforce housing in this draft concept. And finally, I am the managing director of Livermore Shakespeare Festival, the nonprofit organization proposing to fund and build what is called the Black Box Theater. Thank you for prioritizing the development of a downtown hotel. I can't wait for our over 5,000 patrons to be able to spend a whole weekend in Livermore celebrating our spectacular region and spending their money here. And thank you, finally, for including the performance facility in this concept and acknowledging that in addition to our rodeo heritage and our science identity, that performance, art education, and artistic expression are a crucial part of Livermore's character, and that if we can provide an affordable space for the community to connect, create, learn, and celebrate our shared humanity, we can officially call ourselves a downtown destination. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean King, Kevin Lawler, and Michael Frederick.
Good evening. First of all, I, Jean King, I'm a chairman of the Board of LV PAC, the Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center, which runs the Bankhead Theater and the Bothwell Arts Center. At its January 25th meeting, the board passed the following motion. "The LV PAC Board supports more regular and handicap parking next to the Bankhead than the 63 spaces presently available." And I am a spokesman for them, and I say that as a spokesman for LV PAC. The next comment is purely from me. It does not come from LV PAC, and it's my own thoughts. And what I wanted you to do is to look at the whole project, to look at all the four elements that define the downtown: the open space, the hotel, the housing, the parking. Now, my passion, personal passion, is open space. You know, I was on the Tri-Valley Conservancy. I want the urban growth boundary. I want a lot of open space. I want open space downtown. That is my big passion for downtown. I listened to Tong describe what this central park should be. It should be the most important part of our downtown. It should make the downtown be continuous. It should gather everything together and be the most important part of downtown, the open space that goes through it. And by that, I think the Stockman's Park is going to be wonderful. That's open space. That's a great park. I wanted to do it. But I want is to have a park that goes all the way from the Bankhead to L Street, continuous and to be big, and to be not broken up by housing, and not to be just open space around a hotel or around housing. I want it to be open so we can have art walk there and we're not intruding on things. So the way I think that we can get this is just by making a few little changes, is if we can move the hotel so it's more on Railroad Avenue. It's on the corner of L Street, but it goes more along railroad. That will open up more space on L Street so that the green can go all the way from Livermore Avenue to L Street. It can also move the housing then over on L Street, which is where most people wanted it. And actually, if you have the micro-units you can get according to an architect, you can get probably 130 to 140 micro-units there on L Street on the main part. Otherwise, if we can't, if they don't work on I Street because of the, you know, the vibrations, then maybe there's some other city property where the extra housing can go. But I would like these few little quirks to the downtown, to the west-side plan, and I think it can make it work so that it can have all those elements that we do want, and then we can have the open space, we can have the hotel, we can have the housing over on L Street as people wanted to do. So I would like you to look at that with the west-side plan and see if you can make those adjustments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. King. Kevin Leiler, Michael Frederick, Rick Dobbs.
Counsel, staff, my name is Kevin Lawler. I'm a small business owner. My company is Business Intelligence 101. I'm located in the second, third floor above SOST, and I'm here representing not only myself and a lot of the other business owners that are office-business-type folks who are in flavor of the two plans. I think you've done great work, not without reservations, but I think sacrifice and negotiation is part of this because the other people that I want to represent aren't in this room. They didn't sign the petition. It's my kids, and it's the staff, the people that I want to hire, the people that don't live here that want to come to this town and can't afford. I interview them all the time. I want to hire them. They want to come to work here. There's not a place for them to live, right? So in a certain extent, I can really relate to what Victoria talked about. I mean, I would really like to see lots of affordable housing downtown. I think we could sacrifice a park to do that, but I'm a realist, right? I know that it's going to take a compromise. So please, as we make our changes, don't put people into a little micro, you know, as suggested here. People need a quality place to live, affordable housing right here in downtown. I did visit with all of my neighbors in the office complexes before this meeting. I have the survey. It was 20 different companies are referenced here, primarily high-tech type of companies that feel the same way about our challenges that we have in hiring, because if I can't hire, I can't be here. I live here, I work here, I want to be part of the community. This is the type of people that we want in this town, right? And if I can't hire people, I have to leave the town, right? The last point is, in the discussion with my colleagues that live downtown and work downtown in these office complexes, there is a slight preference that we go with the east-side hotel concept. We think that the proximity to the Bankhead would attract small conventions. I work with a lot of software companies. We have user conferences. If we can get our users, you know, these are the people to come, we can have these breakout sessions at the Bankhead, have the 500 theater sessions for the big breakout sessions, and really make it a high-quality event. I think would bring more revenue to the Bankhead and things like that, so that's my preference. I just invite you all, be bold. Let's go all the way. Vote yes on one of the two plans, preferably the east-side, and let's get going. Thank you.
Mr. Lawler, thank you. Michael Frederick, Rick Dobbs, Chris Riley.
Hi. Assume I praised you for a minute and a half, and I'll end quickly. I want to talk in favor of the west-side concept, but with a few suggestions. I've been involved in discussions with members of the community group and the unified concept, and out of those discussions, a few ideas came out for changes that would kind of make everybody a little bit more happy. I urge you to consider realigning the hotel so it runs along railroad, still anchored on L and railroad, and also then the two units of housing combined and running somewhat parallel to the hotel. This would open up more of the land for functional open space. This would open up more of the land for functional open space. I feel the current West Side plan uses a lot of land for landscaping. I also would like to see a parking garage and retail next to the Bankhead, and I was hoping to see a swap between the I Street property and that property, but maybe something can be resolved. I'm not sure about that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Frederick. Rick Dobbs, Chris Riley, Joan Green.
Hey, guys. Rick Dobbs. I'm the owner of The Last Word in Aviation. So, I have everything on my phone, and also I can check Livermore Rants and Rates at the same time. Make sure I'm not getting, you know, I don't want to get bad mouth on there. You know, my wife has a saying, "The thing that's better than perfect is done," which is actually how I got her to marry me. But when we look at, you know, I look at this plan, and I see elegance, I see precision, I see a lot of compromise. It certainly wasn't, you know, as far as what, as I walked through the process and looked at it and sat down with a lot of people, it certainly wasn't what I was looking for. But I'm pretty happy with what's going on right there. My wife and I also get to travel the U.S. all the time. We help people open restaurants and bars all over the country. We are, and it always leads back to a conversation on the plane ride home about how it implies, excuse me, applies to Livermore. And it's important that we look past, you know, not just what's happening now. Once you get past shiny and new, and the economy starts going down a bit, what's the plan for, you know, what are things going to look like then? What's the funding for things going to look like then? Need to make sure that we're not doing, planning everything just so, you know, around the desire for an art walk, but really something that's going to be a great legacy 10, 15 years from now. Now that Mike Madden's gone, I'm going to go against him as far as, because he's my landlord. But I, but I think the West Side, or, excuse me, the East Side is really where we want to be when it comes to having the hotel. It'll work beautifully with the Bankhead. You know, someone, again, someone who travels all the time, I get to see how that works. Convention business is great. You know, the hotels love that, you know, Saturday, Sunday wedding business, but the convention business Monday through Friday is their bread and butter. It makes them happy. Last thing you want is a hotel that's going to be, continue to switch hands. Also, you know, things like that bring in expense accounts. I mean, one of the things I hear all the time is we want a high-end steakhouse. As a restaurant owner, I'd love to do that, but, you know, that, those expense accounts are really what drives, if you want a high-end steakhouse, that's how you get a high-end steakhouse. So, you also get the bonus of those hotel guests getting to go and hang out at Blacksmith Square, which is certainly a jewel of downtown, something great, something unique, and an important part of what we do here. Not only that, West Side parking will open up everything so that there's actually more opportunity for other businesses to thrive on the other end of that town. It's often said that you got to plant a tree that you might not sit under the shade of, but man, we got to get the tree planted. Let's get this done. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Chris Riley, Joan Green, Jim Murray.
Thank you, everybody, and wow, I'm just blown away by the enthusiasm and positivity. It's not what I expected, so my, my talk has changed a little bit. But I have to echo the point that now is the key word. Getting it done is the key word, and I hope that my story settles in as an example and a case study of what happens if this isn't done soon and you don't take the affordable housing seriously. My name is Chris Riley. I'm a business owner and resident of Livermore for 13 years now. The first nine and a half of those years, I was almost never here. My time was consumed by a three-hour daily commute to the Silicon Valley, and my weekends were full of housework. Five years ago, I got married, and four years ago, we had our first daughter, Ava. After her birth, the pressure of always being gone became more than annoyance. It was now impacting my ability to be present at home. So, at that time, and a second daughter on the way, I needed to make a major change. I decided to found a local business, Fixate, named Fixate Idaho, and now while I knew I was going to take a hit and pay, the goal was to be present, have enough money to provide for my family, and build a successful business. Fixate is three years old as of January. We are approaching a million in revenue. We have seven employees, of which four are local, and so are three contractors. In Livermore, I found a great coworking space. My commute vanished, and I finally was able to enjoy the town, a place, it seemed, that I was going to be able to grow with, but my perspective has changed. As a business owner, I am a steward of my company's growth. This means I have to balance my business's need to grow with my need for a healthy salary. $130,000 a year in most places would be very good, but here it is impossible to live on, and if I am housepoor and barely surviving, neither can my employees. So, no matter how much I've fallen in love with Livermore, I cannot justify the cost of living here for my family, my business, or my employees, and I'm no longer confident in the city's objective to support and sustain young families and working professionals. That is why, next Wednesday, my house is going on the market, and I'm moving to Colorado. In Colorado, I have already found two towns that have what I love in Livermore with half the mortgage price. And Fixate, for now, will continue to have an office here, but one of our existing employees is already considering relocating, and all new hires will be made there. When we decided three months ago that we were going to do this, I felt defeated by the Bay Area, but I no longer feel that way. I feel like Livermore has let me down. Moving to Colorado will give me an instant raise without costing my business a penny. By leaving, I can continue to grow the business at a faster rate and create a better life for my family and employees. After I broke this news to everybody, I was just blown away by the number of people who were praising it and considering the same. And so, I'd have to say, take all of this energy here today and just pick one of these plans and do something. You don't have time. You really don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Joan Green. I'm me. Have you passed? Okay. Jim Murray, Milo Nordike.
Hi. Again, I'm Jim Murray. Hi to city council and staff. I like the Stockman's addition and the reduction of housing that it implies to, like, 130 units, and I like the amount of open space. My primary problem is that neither plan provides what, in my mind, is the simplest and best solution to the number-one concern from the outreach effort, namely parking. The two plans have either housing or the hotel next to the Bankhead, and they allow, and they address the parking issue with in-situ underground parking and a new I Street garage. It seems to me that a much simpler and better solution would be to locate a large parking structure next to the Bankhead. It's clearly the best, most centrally-located spot available for handicap parking, a drop-off zone, and a large parking garage to serve the Bankhead and Livermore Theaters and the other retail outlets in the super block. It would eliminate the need for an I Street garage and open up that area to overflow surface parking. It would also eliminate the need for underground parking at the hotel and housing, wherever they are best located on the west side of Livermore, Livermore Avenue. I realize that this parking issue can be met a number of different ways, and there may turn out to be good reasons why a parking garage next to the Bankhead is not the best solution, but I don't see them, and I don't understand why you aren't considering them. And I don't see why modifying one of these plans for an East Side parking garage would significantly increase the timeline. After all, all this detailed planning has been done in one month. Considering that this decision will be with the city for decades to come, now is the time to come up with the best plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Milo Nordike, Bill Dunlop. Jan Bravant.
Hi, there. I'm just planning on speaking a little bit about the decision that you are facing between east, the East Side development or the West Side development. It seems to me that the East Side development puts over there things which really would be far best in the West Side. The, putting the hotel there puts it in a place where it's basically a little bit too big, too big for that, and you can see when you, when you put the drawing together that it's really not much, pretty much extra room, and so it's limited in what you can do with it. And I think it's far better that the hotel goes on the West Side rather than being squeezed up into the East Side. In addition, on the East Side, there's clearly parking needed for, if the hotel went there, it would really be a difficult place to find the parking places for that hotel, because there's nothing, when you're in the drawings that you have of a hotel put there, there's very little room extra for this parking garage. So, in general, it seems to me that the, that the two plans that you have to put the East Side as the site for the hotel is really putting it in the wrong place. And I'm sorry. And also, I think the West Side, you would like that development of the new downtown to have certain advantages to it, one of which is the hotel, and the second one is that that's where jobs should be, new jobs should be. And the, the space on the East Side is rather limited, and the hotel couldn't really be big enough, and it couldn't add parking. Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Nordike. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, uh, well, that's my basic, basic message.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Bill Dunlop, Jan Bravant. Rick Nordike.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk with you again. It's been a very interesting evening. I would like to present to you the idea of perhaps considering rearranging four elements that have been identified in this downtown process. And if all four of these suggestions were included for your study and development process, we believe that you would lead to very broad support throughout the whole community. And first, we agree with David Kent's recommendation that the hotel be realigned along Railwood Avenue and the northwest corner of the Lucky Site to L Street, from L Street over to K Street, and this moves it to the northwest corner of the site. This enables the creation of a large, continuous pedestrian greenbelt south of the hotel that joins with the Stockman's Park and connects downtown from L Street clear through to the Bankhead Plaza. The linear open space paired with the horseshoe shape of the park will really tie down some good amenities for, for the area. The hotel, well, together, and so we have several things there that it ties down: the hotel and conference center, the Black Box Theater, Science Center, the historic Blacksmith Square, and new and existing shops and restaurants, the parking, the Bankhead Theater, and residential units. You basically provide an easy access through all of those by making that one change. The downtown will become a magnet for the residents and visitors to enjoy. And then on the, on the lodging part, you then end up south of that hotel and the walkway. You have room for the, for the units for housing and an architect's work to provide the best relationship of what they should be in filling those in and providing for people who need the housing. The East Side parking garage is adjacent to East Side businesses, and the Bankhead Theater completes our list. A restaurant and retail use would be developed at the surface level along Livermore Avenue with parking behind that and on upper levels. Building on what the county has already planned, we're asking you to look at these four elements in your development process, and they are the L Street to Railroad Avenue Hotel, linear green space that's bound with the Stockman Park, housing on L Street, and an East Side garage with retail. And we thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to working with you. We have a drawing that shows these changes, and we'll provide that to the staff for you to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Bravant, Rick Nordike, Angie Ancola. Jan Bravant. Okay. Rick Nordike.
Good evening, Rick Nordike. I, I consider myself a pragmatic person, but I like semishy too, cemetery also. So, as a result, it makes no sense at all to me to have a building next to the Bankhead unless a parking garage. I don't think you can make a parking lot. I don't think you can have too much parking. I think it'd be better to have too much than too little. I, between my work with volunteering for the Bankhead and a patron myself, I've been through that area at all hours, and as referred tonight, it's the same result. It's always, for, I'll humor myself to go in and out just in case, but it's, you usually get the same results. And I'd like to see handicap parking added to that East Side area next to the Bankhead where it is now. And a designated drop-off area would be good. I hear that from a lot of my colleagues at the Bankhead, that there is no designated drop-off area that would really come in handy. I'd like to see the hotel on the West Side, but in the middle of Railroad. And this may be a stretch, but someone suggested, I saw recently, putting an archway, pedestrian archway across spanning Livermore Avenue from the area of Uncle Hughes to the other side. Maybe not a Rialto Bridge, but a, a simple pedestrian bridge. It would, you could put City Livermore around a little sign on that, or maybe a welcome to Livermore as that is considered the gateway to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nordike. Angie Ancola. I think she left. Tom Bergeron. Bergeron? Tom Bergeron? Oh, there he is. Who's next?
Mr. Mayor, city council, staff. I went to the community outreach in November and was very impressed with all of the outside consultancy being considered in planning. People who knew across the country what didn't work, so we could incorporate that and make sure we didn't make any of those kind of decisions. I, I'm in favor of the West Side Hotel Plan. I do favor the recent proposal by the community group, which rotates the hotel and splits up the apartments and also moves the parking garage next to the Bankhead. And in that plan, they also put half of, or close to half of, the apartments by I Street next to the Bankhead Garage, and people have been talking about, worried about the train going by. Well, if, if you've been, I'm sure you've been to a lot of major cities. I was just in Chicago, and when you take the train from O'Hare Airport down into downtown Chicago, by the time you get anywhere near North Avenue, from there on, if people had their windows open in the train, you could spit into people's apartments. their windows open in the train, and you could spit into people's apartments, and they, those things are packed, and they're never empty, because people, a lot of people now want to be close to city services where they could walk to get what they need. So I think even though you have the ACE train, which goes by a number of times, it's nothing like in major cities like in Chicago, where they have those trains from the airport going by from four in the morning until one in the morning every 20 minutes, and people still live practically on top of them. So it's, a lot of people want to live downtown, and I think that would be a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Felker, Alexandra Felker, Nancy Bankhead.
I think we should do one of the plans. I prefer the east side, east side hotel, because I think it would really round out that block, and it'd be nice to have one solid continuous block surrounding the Bankhead Plaza. The housing looks great. I'm representing about 50 people I've talked to this week. Thank you.
Thanks, Felker. Alexandra Felker. And Nancy Bankhead.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity to come and to speak tonight. And I also wanted to say thank you so much for the progress and work that everyone has put into both of these plans. It's clear that you've put a lot into it, and I just want to say thank you for that. And I'll be advocating on behalf of the development of the downtown, and especially for affordable housing. And since you asked the reason why, I'd like to share a proverb, I believe it's a Chinese proverb that was mentioned by one of the other speakers, which is that a society grows great when people plant trees in whose shade they know they shall never sit. And basically what I think that means, and I think that we are doing that today with both of these plans, and basically that means that we're not only advocating on behalf of the current generation, but also on behalf of the generations to come. And I think that's what's important for Livermore, is not only to think about what we're doing here and now, but also to make a place where people can live and people can afford to enjoy this beautiful place. So, um, yeah, that's basically it. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Felker. Nancy Bankhead, Don Argula, Jim Cullen.
Hi, I'm Nancy Bankhead, and I'm speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for the theater. I've gone to many of the meetings about the downtown plan. I've gone to the committee workshops. I've listened to experts. I didn't always like what, what they said, but it was time well spent. I don't like how upset people have been. They want their side, they want our east side, west side, and they get mad at each other when they do that. I don't like that. Um, I was born in this town. My father was born here before me. It doesn't matter if you're here one year or 50 years. We're trying for the best for Livermore. U.S. Council need to remember Livermore's history. Livermore was Robert Livermore's ranch. It turned into a town. It is still, there's still ranching going on. I know that, and I'm still one of those. My dream day for a tourist, tourist gets here around 10 o'clock, checks into the hotel, jumps on the trolley, goes out and does the wine thing, because we don't want them to get a DUI. They have lunch out in the wineries, they come back around 2:00, 2:30, 3:00, they go take a nap, then they shower, then they go and they have dinner in our lovely downtown Livermore. Then they go to the Bankhead Theater and have a wonderful show, they go back to the hotel, and they go to sleep. On the housing, isn't Growth Brothers going to be developed, and there's 200 or more housing going to be developed there? So I think there's going to be a lot of housing downtown Livermore. Speaking for myself and nobody else, I really like the, the hotel next to the theater. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bankhead. Don Argula, Jim Cullen, and Paul Hewitt.
Thank you. Don Argula, CEO of the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce, which is also a downtown property owner, and I am also a resident of Livermore. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your leadership and for the outstanding work by the awesome city staff and placeworks on this incredible opportunity to plan the next phase of revitalization of the downtown district. Thank you for giving the chamber a seat at the table, the downtown steering committee, and we were pleased to partner with you by educating our members and the public with accurate information about the plan and the process. This chamber was skeptical about the economic feasibility of the plan. After all, who in the world would offer up a $14.5 million asset with little or no recognition of any financial gain? It would be fiscally irresponsible, to say the least, and perhaps illegal in the extreme. However, we're pleased with what we see with the two concepts before us, and we look forward to working with you to help close that $3 million deficit down the road. We were fortunate, we have two serious investors who have stepped up, Rakesh Patel and the Presidio Company, private hotel developer. Thank you to them for their endurance and faith in Livermore's community and city leaders, and the chamber looks forward to supporting the hotel project to deliver a quality luxury boutique hotel in the long awaited foreign downtown. And the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association, who has offered a unique and thoughtful proposal that meets mutual goals. Land to build badly needed affordable housing, thereby offsetting some of the city's $14.5 million obligation to its Affordable Housing Fund, and in return, receiving land for public space for a commemorative park in downtown. On behalf of the entire chamber organization, our hats are off to the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association. Thank you. And wouldn't it be sweet with the Livermore Rodeo, celebrating 100 years this year, to approve this and to begin, get the ball rolling on the park this year? This chamber strongly supports the council's approval of all of the actions outlined in item 3.01.2, and we stand ready to continue to support you as you begin to execute a plan in 2018 for the downtown Livermore District. Thank you. I have 36 seconds left, and I just want to say, I'm a little disturbed by some of the comments that have been made about replacing housing with a parking garage and putting people's future homes next to the railroad tracks on I Street. There's just really something wrong with that. And I've lived in Livermore for over 30 years, and this is not the value of this town and the community. And I hope that you will exercise wisdom and compassion when you make your decision on where you put these components. They are not game pieces on a board. They are real economic factors, and we need to take that into consideration as well, as well as the people who will be affected by that. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for Jan Bravant. Okay. Jim Cullen, Paul Hewitt, Mark Liu. Jim Cullen? Paul Hewitt? Mark Liu? Steve Laurinaga? Oh, there's Steve. Peg Folta is next.
Good evening. My name is Steve Laurinaga. I am the chairman of the board for the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce, as well as I work for Sandia Labs Federal Credit Union, which is just located downtown. I first want to thank you, Mayor, City Council, for all that you do. It's greatly appreciated. But I also know that being in your seats, it's not easy task having, to make difficult decisions, but I have faith in each and every one of you that you will move forward and make these decisions quickly. I would like to support the two concepts for the development of the downtown that were presented this evening. What I am asking of you as leaders to move forward with the execution decision of either, either the two sides, either the west or, or the east side. The importance is to move forward and do not stall. As for the hotel, the Livermore Chamber of Commerce has been neutral on which side, but the importance is that has been in planning, has been in the planning way too long. I encourage that actions are taken to get going on this project so that we can serve the many needs of the area businesses, wineries, and other events that we need to have here to bring money to the area. Both plans presented were, have been reviewed by the hotel developer, so it's just, again, encouraging to move forward. Uh, I would also like to thank the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association for their offer. It mean, it meets many needs from a variety of aspects. The importance is that they made a decision and they moved forward. Let's follow that example. I also want to comment on the importance of repaying the 14.5 million in the affordable housing soon, because not, not years down the road. And my opinion is very important, so that if we need further taxes, we would be more open to approve something like that or to vote on that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Peg Folta, David Rounds, and we have last call for Jim Cullen, Paul Hewitt, and Mark Liu. Okay, Peg Folta? Nope, gone. David Rounds? And Michael Ferrucci. It's followed by Stephen Mirasoux.
Thank you, and I assume the next minute that I'm not saying it is thanking you all for everything you've done. It's been tough. It was not my intention to speak tonight, but you're stuck with me anyway. I have pretty much said everything I wanted to say the last few times I spoke before this council. Build workforce housing, but don't put it on the east side. Make good decisions about parking that will serve existing as well as new businesses and the handicapped. Protect and support the uniqueness of Blacksmith Square. Leverage the Stockman's proposal to give downtown the kind of Central Park and open space we all can be proud of for decades to come. And for better or worse, understand that the decision about where to locate the hotel, will determine the ability to execute all of these goals. However, the real reason I wanted to speak tonight was to make another point about the discourse. Last Friday evening, a member of this council decided to approach me in public while I was talking to a family friend, and proceeded to accuse me of not having any integrity around the downtown development discussion, and then walked off before I could respond. I'm not sharing this because I have a concern about my integrity. I know what I stand for, and what I believe in, and why. However, for an elected official to believe that this type of action was appropriate should disturb us all. Unfortunately, as we have been coming to the end of this process around downtown development, the rancor has exploded. A lot of people are passionate about downtown, but that passion is leading some to critically attack people in groups who disagree with them. Create false scenarios about delays and possible outcomes, and maybe the worst sin, claiming to know a person's motivations and using that assumption as a cudgel. It's time to take a deep breath. Step back. What you are all doing, what we are all doing, is important, and the decision, decisions made will impact us, our children, and our grandchildren for decades to come. We are almost at the finish line of the planning process. Let us finish on a high note. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rounds. Michael Ferrucci, Stephen Mirasoux, Tom O'Neil.
Good evening, Mayor, the City Council members, staff, and everybody I see behind me. I came here early and signed a blue card, and then I drove down to the corner of Fifth and South Livermore, that lavender house with the white picket fence, and I watched the beginning of the meeting, and I realized that I should hurry up and get back down here so I could speak. First words I learned to spell in elementary school was "community," C-O-M-M-U-N-I-T-Y. And I, I can't quite quote Carl when I watched him at, at home, but whatever he was saying, I agree with. I also want to commend. Yes. I also want to commend Mike Madden, because he took the words right out of my mouth. I was there, I owned two businesses downtown, one on First Street and one on Second Street, and I saw the whole downtown redevelopment go on. I was there when you couldn't even drive down the street, when police couldn't even drive down the street, and I had my doors open. So I know that this is a long haul for, for everybody that works downtown, everybody that owns businesses downtown, and particularly the people that live downtown. I, I empathize. Uh, I've seen lots of changes in our downtown. There's light at the end of the tunnel. The first, let's see, the first speakers that I saw tonight were the Stockman's people. And I have to confess that I really haven't been part of this whole thing, other than from the outside. Obviously, I live downtown, and I am paying attention. However, I haven't really been to these meetings, except for the, some of the outreach with Mr. Early. So I know there's a tremendous amount of work, and I respect everything that you guys have done, but tonight really turned me around. The Stockman's proposal, to me, is something that I, I would approve of. I would also say my wife Pam would approve of. And matter of fact, I left Pam down in Southern California. I drove here yesterday from Orange County. Took me five hours to get here. I had a Rotary meeting tonight and a City Council meeting tonight. So I'm here for you, and I want you to do the right thing. I'm indeed a '60s refugee. I grew up in San Francisco Elementary, Junior High, High School, City College. My father managed Union Square Garage for almost 40 years. I grew up on top of Union Square Garage, that park. I grew up two blocks away from, from Golden Gate Park. Having a park in your city is a wonderful thing. If I had a magic wand, that whole block would be green. It, it's important that we have a place to go. Right now, we have like little, little parks all over the city, but having a Stockman's Park, I agree with them, it's for veterans. My father was a veteran. I respect veterans. The Black Box, obviously, I'm partial to having a theater, because I want to raise money for my Rotary Club's musical scholarship, Music Scholarship Fund. So let's get the Black Box going. How much time do I have? I have 10 seconds. I just want to say thank you to everybody that spoke tonight, and I appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you, Michael.
West side, okay.
Stephen Mirasoux?
He left.
Okay, Tom O'Neil, David Turner, Denise Ledden.
Mr. Mayor and the council, I do believe what other people have said tonight, that we are close to the end of this process, and it's going to turn out pretty good. It's going to turn out beautiful. The things that we agree on, we don't need to talk about them a lot, because we agree on them. Nobody, except one person, I think, disapproves of the Stockman deal. I mean, it's a marvelous deal. What's not to like? It's just, they're gone now, but I thanked them individually when they were here, some of them. It's just tremendous. It's a boon from heaven. And everybody agrees on it. And of course, we have to deal with our affordable housing obligations, and this is going to make it much easier to deal with them. Everybody agrees that we should do that, and it looks like we could do it with 130 units. At least we could make a big dent in our obligations within the rectangle that we're talking about, whatever happens. Beyond that rectangle, maybe, isn't that important, therefore, with regard to housing. Everybody agrees about open space. I do want to come back to that a little bit later, but that is not in dispute at all. You will please the people of Livermore, the bigger you make that space open. I, I envision, I'll come to it now, a parkland that goes all the way from Stanley Boulevard, excuse me, from Livermore Avenue to L Street, just a parkland there. And I think we can do it, and some have suggested, just a little bit of nudging around of things in the plan for the west side would achieve that. We agree about the Black Box. We agree about the Science Museum. We agree about Black, uh, Blacksmith Square. Everybody agrees. I know a lot of time was spent on those tonight, but that's okay. People wanted to approve of things that they know are in the plan. The disagreement finally comes down to where the hotel should be. And I thought, just toward the end, there were some very eloquent statements for not putting the hotel with the Bankhead. I was surprised that Nancy Bankhead wants to put it there. I didn't know she'd want it there, but she does, and she's free to do that. But we, we've heard that people want more parking there, and, and we've heard it often, that, that there's a need for parking at the Bankhead. We've heard that people want handicap parking there, because we have handicapped people who like to go to the Bankhead. It, it seems to be, also, we've heard people say, I don't think, looking out of a hotel window, at a bunch of bricks. That's not a slur on the Bankhead. It's beautiful from the front side, but if you're at a hotel and the bricks are a few feet away, maybe it's not beautiful. I think there are very valid arguments for not putting it there, the, the hotel, and very valid arguments for putting housing there. So I hope you'll take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. David Turner?
I'm not parking.
Per- sorry?[1794.63] Per—sorry? David Turner, Denise Ludden, Brendan Finley. David Turner? Denise Ludden? Oh, there's Denise.
Are you Denise?
No, he's Brendan Finley. Okay.
Denise Ludden here. Thank you, City Council, and thank you, City Staff, for these plans. And thank you for the heat in that other building. I'm freezing here now. I still hope for a lovely sprawling wine country hotel. I support it being placed on the west side northwest corner at L and stretching along Railroad. That would allow for it to open to a large public green space that connects up with the Stockman's wonderful gift of the Veterans Memorial Park. I have always wanted a large green space stretching from Livermore Avenue to L Street. This benefits the businesses and the arts. I have been a co-chair for Livermore Cultural Arts for Art Walk, and also for the Wine Street event. This large green space would be ideal for such events. Livermore would be exceptional to have a mini Golden Gate Park downtown. I am one of those who doesn't want any rental housing on these public spaces, but we know we have to accept a small amount of appropriate rental housing. Or do we? I hope that the City Council could find a way to find any other place to place these extra 130 units, so that we can have an exceptional downtown with a large green space. No other town has that. So, let's see. To complement the height of the Blacksmith Square, I still hope for a one-story restaurant retail on the east side, next to the Bankhead Theater. Behind this new retail, I hope for a parking structure and handicapped parking. I have shared before, an east side hotel or housing would be a monstrosity and would overwhelm the space. Stair stepping from one story would be visually pleasing. The parking here benefits the businesses, and when I come out of the Bankhead Theater at night, I don't want to have to—when the existing garage is full, I don't want to have to walk to the other end of the large—development to get to that other new parking spot. There's many of us who need close parking after the shows. Let's see. I also think that if we were to move the housing to another location nearby, it would create such a nice, more green space that the wineries would benefit by this town being exceptional with this west side hotel plan. It would be the destination. Livermore would be a destination, especially for this wine enthusiast award book that I saw earlier this evening. I don't see why the winery people don't want to improve this downtown spot. And I didn't understand Victoria Fierce very much, but I'm intrigued. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ludden. Brendan Finley, Doris Ryan, Richard Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Brendan Finley, past Chair for Livermore Chamber of Commerce, and also with Wentworth Vineyard, so I get to follow my boss, Carl. So just want to get out of here quickly, as everybody's been here late. First of all, thank you, the Mayor, City Council, for all your efforts in this process. It's been amazing how we've gotten to where we are. I started four years on the Livermore Chamber, and hoped that this was going to be done by then as President, but I'm co-chair now, so I get to see how it happens. The City Staff and Placeworks, thank you so much for all you did. It was amazing to see the long hours, how you educated the community, how you put the program together, and what you did for all of us. I know it was a lot of hard work, and we've heard that a lot tonight, especially from your bosses here. A lot of rigorous work, and a lot that you did for us, so thank you so much. Special thanks to Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association. Without you, I don't think we would be here tonight, where we are and what we're doing. So thank you for your commitment to the community and to Livermore. It's amazing that we are here right now. We're all excited for this revitalization of downtown, and we, the Chamber, have been excited for our business partners in the Chamber, and excited for these two concepts that are in front of you tonight. As we know, this is an introduction of the concept, and not the details regarding the design, which will be at a later date. Tonight, it's about these pillars: hotel, housing, parking, cultural space. Both of these answer that, so we can choose either one. As you know, you have a few key characters that are important to Livermore Chamber. We mentioned those. We have to repay back the 14.5 million for affordable housing. We have to get housing down here for workforce, housing for our seniors and our vets, and, most important, housing for workers that we need to have in this valley. We need to staff our businesses now. We at Livermore Chamber, we are neutral east or west. The hotel can be either side. We need a destination to grow our business, our environment, and continue to make this a visitor destination that increases this amazing wine region. We need to make sure that the hotel is sustainable for the investors, so whatever one they think fits is what we want. As these two plans will create community, enhance business economy, and a Livermore culture that we want to have as our story. Thank you all, council, for your support. We look forward to your direction and the legacy that you will create. And I want to finish—you said you had coffee, beer. Let's finish this, and toast with some wine and some brute.
I like it. Okay, Doris Ryan, thank you very much for your comments. Doris Ryan, Richard Ryan, Tom Ramos.
Good evening. Doris Ryan went home. I'm Dick Ryan. One advantage of being a late speaker is I've heard a lot of comments that I really endorse, particularly by Bill Dunlop and Tammy Royce and Jean King. They've really said what I would say anyway, and so I endorse what they said. I'd like to amplify a little bit by talking about open space. You know, great cities around the world have beautiful parks downtown. I mean, we heard about classic cities like Athens and Rome. I had the privilege to work in Vienna, where there's a large park right downtown. It's gorgeous. Think of Union Park in San Francisco, and a town of more our size. Sonoma has a beautiful plaza surrounded by businesses. Just think of that as a model for Livermore. I'd also like to bring up something that nobody else has brought up, and that is the future. It was—I think Dale Kaye said that, you know, "We aren't the town we were 40 years ago, or even 10 years ago." Think 10 years in the future. I just read an article in Economist Magazine about cars. GM is becoming the number-one autonomous automobile maker in the world. That's where the business is. We are going to be using cars. We're not going to own them. Parking is essential today. 20 years from now, I think it may be a different world. And so, as you build these parking garages, I would urge you to think about future uses for those structures. Put in the infrastructure with sewer lines and electricity and stuff, where these can be turned into office spaces, or restaurants, or whatever they may become, because the future isn't going to be like today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Tom Ramos, Rose Ramos, John Stein. Tom Ramos, Rose Ramos, John Stein, followed by Melanie.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court, City of Livermore. I've lived in Livermore for almost half a century, and the site you're talking about has changed dramatically. I came just after the tracks were unified, and it was basically a vacant parcel with a few warehouses and the U.P. station. After that, Lucky grew out of it and came down again, and the parking became critical to the downtown. Planners often say that a major new plan that is disliked by most citizens for different reasons will probably be a success. If it's disliked by citizens for the same reason, it will probably be a failure. If it's liked by everyone, it's a miracle. But this is Livermore. I think you've come a long way, and I think, as a number of people have said, a good plan today is better than a perfect plan tomorrow. I do have some brief comments on the plan. The first is parking. It's very important. In looking at future parking, have you looked at the parking that will be created by intensified uses on the existing downtown? I mean, as retail converts to restaurants, you need a lot more parking. And also, have you looked at the overflow parking from residential? It seems like everywhere there's a residential project in Livermore, there's overflow parking on the streets nearby. In regard to traffic, there will probably be the need to put in an underpass at L Street, and the straightening of the intersection at Railroad and First. Those are off-site costs, and may be triggered by intensified development downtown. So they might be looked at. I, like everyone else, would like to see a more open space. I think the moving of the 130 units, or 100 units, to Pacific Avenue is a great step forward, and I would like to thank the Livermore Stockman's Association. That's a wonderful change. I think as you plan, you should look at consolidating uses, going down rather than up, and if possible, move uses off the site. I think this is still a little bit more on the site than it really can comfortably accommodate. In particular, the southeast, southwest garage, you might want to look at going down one level. The incremental costs might be a lot less than some of the other alternatives. If the site is undeveloped, it's basically just the excavation costs. You don't have to put in curtain walls, or shoring, or worry about damaging nearby buildings, but it's one way to go down. Finally, I urge that you listen to everyone, take the input, and come up with a plan that makes you proud. I think that you, and your children and grandchildren, will want to live in a plan you come up with and shop and visit, and it will be here long after we're all gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Melanie? Melanie, no last name? Melanie? Okay. Nancy Mulligan, Sherri Souza, Jeff Caskey.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, staff. I'm Nancy Mulligan. And after listening to all the business owners speak, I'm afraid your objective is going to be to satisfy them. The regular citizens who were hoping for a space that all of our families could enjoy have given up, and must have decided that their ideas will be ignored. I still have a small bit of hope that our voices will be heard. I've attended several meetings on the redevelopment topic. Throughout the City Council meetings and the outreach programs, I've been impressed with how the citizens of Livermore have come together and agreed on some key elements that would make our city the envy of the East Bay. I believe the most important elements were delineated at the outreach events. I hope the council can keep these important points in mind. Livermore needs more parking, and especially more handicap parking. The logical place for a garage would be adjacent to the Bankhead Theater, and I'm surprised that it wasn't included in any of the plans. The city should have a downtown hotel, since the wineries alone are becoming a rival to Napa, not to mention The Lab, The Outlets, Little League, and our art and music events. The best place for those would be on the west side of Livermore Avenue, where the views would be beautiful, and their guests would be able to enjoy the whole area. Every speaker that I have heard has asked for a lot of green space running through the new development. Stockman Park is great, but we need trees, please, all through the development. In summer, the heat is debilitating. The city has been building housing like it was in competition with Dublin, so maybe we don't need any more housing on this site. But if we must have housing, please keep it on the L Street side of the site. And make it a priority to honor the character of our city, which I feel you will. I'm hopeful that enough City Council members can feel the beating heart of our city, and fight to make these eight acres the jewel of Livermore.
Thank you, Ms. Mulligan. Sherri Souza, Jeff Caskey, Claire Moran.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, and City Staff. First of all, I want to thank you for all the effort that you've put into organizing this downtown redevelopment. I think you've done a great job. My name is Sherri Souza. I serve on the Board of Directors for the Livermore Chamber of Commerce, and I am a business owner here in town. I am blessed to have lived here for 25 years, and to live and work in the same city. I want to, first of all, acknowledge your due diligence in the community groups that you put together. I think that your outreach was excellent. I think that you heard from a lot of people, more than just the minority. I think that you have huge support in the two plans that you have put forward to the members in the community. And I also like the fact that you've actually, by putting it out to the people, have actually reduced the cost of some of the plans that have been thrown around in the last couple years, because it's been a long haul. I want to thank the Livermore Stockman's Association, because I think that that was brilliant collaboration on their part, to come forward in this time of redevelopment. And I think that they set a great example of collaboration, and I think we need more of that in our town. I think that they know what the community needs. They had a goal of what they wanted out of the deal, and they put it all together and came forward with, I think, it's a pretty good plan. I like the park in the downtown area. I think it serves a lot of needs for our citizens of Livermore. As far as the Affordable Housing Fund and the housing, as you know, I'm a Realtor. And so I have a huge interest in housing, in the housing crisis in California, and we are experiencing a housing crisis in California. You can read it everywhere. The facts are out there. But I do want to applaud you on the progress that you've done with your attention to the housing needs here in Livermore, and to the great job that you've done on the infill projects here in town, and the great job that you've done on the accessory dwelling permits. Because I think that this is part of the solution to the housing crisis in California, and Livermore is doing their part. I can tell you, I attended the California Association of Realtors meeting recently, and not every city has adapted the accessory dwelling unit permits as easily as we have here. I want to thank the Interfaith Group. I can't believe that we have 1,500 applications for senior housing in a five-year wait. That's incredible. I know it's everywhere, and we have an aging population, okay? So we're going to need more of that type of housing around. So I really want to applaud Interfaith Housing for coming forward and fitting into the plan. Just one more thing here. The hotel. I do have a personal opinion about the hotel. I would like to see it on—most people are saying, "East side, west side, we don't care." I personally would like to see it on the east side. I think it's a better fit over there, for the commerce, for the retail. I think the housing on the far end of Railroad is a better fit, because there's housing over there already. And I just want to let you know that—I would also like to mention my appreciation of the participation for the 30-somethings that are here tonight, and that have been coming on a regular basis, because we need your voice as well. And thank you very much for stepping up and being a part of the decision-making process. I encourage you to move forward confidently as a council, and represent the decisions of the majority, and thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you. Jeff Caskey, Claire Moran, Rajneesh Khanna.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm encouraged to see a broad range of people, previously divided on a number of these topics, coming together over common elements for a consolidated vision of downtown. Stockman's Park, yes. Hey, I'm with Livermore Heritage Guild. We celebrate Livermore's ranching heritage, and I'd like to invite you over to Hagman Ranch, which we open last Sunday of every month. It's a little plug there, okay? And where we celebrate our ranching heritage all the time. A hotel on Northwest Corner, absolutely, and I appreciate David Kent's note about orienting it along Railroad, so that the housing can go south. Why, you ask? So that both the housing and the hotel can help activate the park. We don't swamp the park with nothing but housing. The 10,000-square-foot flex performing space, sure, absolutely. Science Center, you bet. All for it. Yes, to more parking next to the Bankhead. I've been involved in this process for a few years now, as a member of the community group, when we helped face down the Lennar Plan and pushed for real open space and cultural amenities. We've come a long way, thinking creatively. I've heard that we can't put housing within 75 feet of the tracks, okay? But there is vacant land well south of that line, some owned by the city. City also owns land across Livermore Avenue, north of Railroad. Living along the tracks is not degrading. It's awesome. That's not actually just my opinion. That's the opinion of the people who bought homes three blocks along the path, along the tracks, both to the east and to the west of the site that we're talking about. And it's actually not just their opinion, it's the opinion of many of the members on this council who voted to approve that housing as it was built recently here in Livermore. So I encourage you to look at that housing, look at those options, think creatively, and I think we can come up with a good plan for downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Claire Moran. Claire Moran, Rajneesh Khanna. Bulent Erblin. Bulent Erbligin. Butchered that one. Doug Mann. Let's see. Grimm? Arlen Grimm? Arlen Grimm?
Is everything anyone else here, or am I next?
Oh, are you... I'm just rolling down this here. Are you Arlen Grimm?
Yes.
Oh, please. You're next.
Okay, bye.
I went through Claire Moran, Rajneesh Khanna, Bulent, and Doug Mann.
Okay. Mayor Mashan, Council and Staff, thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. I'm Arlen... Thank you. I'm short, too. Thank you for giving me a chance to talk tonight. Couple of things. I came here specifically to talk about supporting the hotel on Railroad, and now I've looked at both plans. I just can't compliment you enough. I realize now I have wanted more and more and more open space. If everybody who's a professional here has come up with saying we can't do it there, then we've got to do it where you guys have got it, one of the two. I will say that people are misguided if they think that being next to the railroad is a disadvantage. I helped finance some building in Chicago that was right next to the L, and I said, "You'll never sell this." My gosh, I was in that apartment as the railroad, the above-ground tracks went right by. They were 10 feet from the window, and it was... You couldn't even hear it. They used an R-35 insulated rated window, and it was fabulous. And the windows that took in air were on the other side, and it made no difference. Okay, that said, I really... I was a school nurse. I did special ed, and I want to advocate on behalf of the children for the housing. For several reasons, I do think that the housing should be put where I didn't want it, but now where I see it has to be, and that's on Railroad and L. Children are going to play. They need a spot. Stockman's Park is a much better choice for the children than in front of the Bankhead. If you have children in a living apartment on the Bankhead Square, you're going to have those children down there in front of the restaurant screaming, yelling, playing as people go out of the Bankhead at all hours. Some of the children will be adolescents. The second... Adolescents are wonderful, but having them 24 hours a day next to the Bankhead may not be the best choice. Okay, so that said, another thing about it is that we want the Bankhead to be inviting. We want people to go from the hotel to the Bankhead with a minimum of trouble, weather changes, too hot, too cold, too rainy. Okay, you put the hotel next to the Bankhead. I agree with the winegrowers. That's a much better spot for it. It's better for the children, and it's better for the commercial interests in downtown. Let me make sure I cover this. Residential units, shared public space. Okay, I'll keep this really brief. I think housing could be better put next to I, but this is what it has to be. It has to be. The parking, I think, is adequate because once you get additional parking put on the space across the street from the Bankhead, it's going to take the pressure off the garage. One last thing, I swear. The multi-level parking on the southwest part, it should be multi-level or below ground. We've got to make use of that space. Put two levels of commercial and put the parking on the roof or underneath it, because you can use the parking space. It's prettier... I mean, the commercial space, it's prettier than parking at ground level.
Thank you, Ms. Grimm. Okay, Connie Cops, Carrie Hernandez, Janice Turner. Ms. Cops.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and Staff. When I look at the downtown, the downtown west side and east side plans, I think they're good, and they've got some merit. Where I think we need to go back and re... Look at things again is it's only been recently that we've picked up the Stockman's and the Interfaith Housing proposals. I think that, you know, you need to be fair in how you're going to deal with your housing. You need to let your citizens really comb through what the deal was in 1962. They need to see that. Was it in the packet? I don't know. Was it in this packet, the actual contract? And you read it through and through? It was there to read? And how long has that been out for, the actual contract? That was the original contract?
Since 1962.
No. Was it... It was in this packet, right? This packet for the citizens?
Couldn't make your comment.
Right. Okay, so I think that Livermore needs to get more creative with its housing and with how they trick in the housing. The Stockman's have one proposal. There's a lot of different ways you could trick in housing. There's a lot of different trades you could make for housing. Something that I saw that I thought was kind of neat, I think it's in San Jose for their new housing, and they're doing it for their teachers. I think it's a nonprofit, but I'm not sure. It might be their city, where they're actually contributing 10% of the down and then sharing in the appreciation as the house appreciates. And I think that the last speaker who brought up the adolescents, the families, how close do you really want that to downtown? I cringe when I drive out of my neighborhood and see the playground facing the liquor store. I just don't think it's right. You know, that's my thing. I just don't think it's right. I really think that you could get a... I'm not saying to rule out the Stockman deal. I'm saying to expand an invitation to your community. Let them know what the problems are. You know, we've got some housing in this plan, and the housing in this plan, you know, we bought it. The deal was, we bought it to be affordable housing. Affordable housing, how you explain it, and you know how you say affordable housing in Livermore is like, well, $80,000, $90,000, you know, for a home. Well, we need to think about the people in our community, the good people in our community that, you know, need a little bit better of a deal than that. You know, someone, a speaker brought up that we've got our ranchers, our wineries, our veterans, we've got our cowboys. You know what we're forgetting? We're forgetting our migrant workers that have historically picked grapes, you know, and I think we need to trick that into... So my want for you to is invite your community to let them know what their specific deals were, what you're... You know, you've got to deal with the Stockman's, but put the feelers out. We want more input on how we could creatively, you know, switch out some land. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cops.
Thank you.
Last call for Melanie. Melanie, once, twice? Okay. Carrie Hernandez, Janice Turner, Veronica Stewart Long.
I'll try to get through this quickly, because... But I've been waiting three hours, so... Okay, let's get through this. I have three parts. Regarding the concept, my preference is the east side hotel concept. Like others, I prefer the hotel closer to the Bankhead Theater, the Parks Plaza directly across the Blacksmith Square. I think the hotel can actually be larger if the parking is placed within or underneath ground. As far as in the form of... If you do go with the east side, I think that breaking up that multi-level residential unit, I think it's just too huge and a big conglomerate. It's taking up the park, the central area, and I think that, like SW parking structure, that could be some of the residential across the street. A L Street could be some of residential. I think breaking it up, allowing a little bit more retail into that area. If by chance you do decide to go with the west side, flip the hotel and the residential because I would hate, just personally, walking through private homes in residential areas to get to a hotel. I think that you would completely cut off that hotel structure, and it just would just feel completely... You've taken up... Blocked off half of that entire area of the central town square. So please keep that in mind. I believe the hotel, keeping it central in that town square, would bring in a lot of vibrancy and livelihood to the downtown, and just please try not to cut that out off with the housing complex. We want to visit. We want to meander, be part of the action, feel at home in the square, and not feel that we're intruding or encroaching on people's residents. So I'd like you to please keep that in mind. Also, I'd like to say that I like to see a little bit more retail, maybe on the first ground floors or even in the Stockman's Park. I'm a female. I like to shop, so... Pardon me. That would... I just think that would be bowed nicely and completely round out the entire square and make that a nice rounded out circle. Secondly, I understand that this is just the first stage, and I know a lot of people have their preferences, but the entire downtown, I mean, it's a large, large area. This is just probably going to be a first in many stages of development. Additional hotels, retail, and all that stuff is going to be coming in, so we just have to, I think, all keep that in mind. In terms of the... Oh, my wish list here. I like to see art, art galleries. Music is important, the Shakespeare plays, the monuments, exhibits, water fountains, and paying homage to our veterans, honoring our agriculture heritage, our ranches, and the, obviously, the amazing envious wine country living. Please take into consideration the art exhibits, architectural building designs and landscape to celebrate, encompass the present and the past, present, future visions of our area. Livermore is the Bay Area's last frontier of open space and country living and outdoor lifestyle, and so please keep it, keep that in mind. Keep it aesthetically pleasing and balanced, and please just use the space wisely. And just one more thing, I just know my time's up, but thirdly, please, please, just make a decision. Be decisive. I went down to San Jose this weekend, Santana Row, and I'm thinking to myself, I went all the way out there to have dinner and a nice, you know, be in part of a nice environment, and I wanted to be here. I wanted to be here in Livermore. I wanted to enjoy our downtown, and we... It has yet to happen. We've been waiting for over a decade. So please don't let any minor setbacks keep you from moving forward. Hung up? Please just break ground, and we're all behind you. The wind's at your back. The economy's doing great. There's not... Hasn't been a better time to get this thing started. So please, there's nothing but dirt and rubble out there right now. Anything is better than what it is today. We'll all be proud of whatever you guys decide, and we're... We all just want to make this a place we can call our own and that whole tagline, "A place we could live more." Livermore. All right? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Janice Turner, Veronica Stewart Long.
Thank you for all your work. I'm speaking first, representing the Sierra Club. What's most important to the Sierra Club is a large green belt area, and we would like this to extend from South Livermore? No. From Livermore Avenue to L Street. And the best way that we see this can happen is by rotating the hotel to the right so that it faces Railroad but also would have an entrance on L Street. Move the multifamily unit B over to next to L Street, and that would open up a clear, green, open space right down the middle. We also support the hotel on the west side. Now I'm going to speak as myself. I was looking at the residential unit A being four stories, and I'm thinking, "That's intimidating." And my thought is to reduce that to two levels, and you are losing 34 units by doing that, but you can add those to the multifamily B and C and making them four levels, which would match up with the hotel, which is going to be four levels over in that area. And there, then that's where you could put the lost 34 units. I just think that would make Livermore Avenue more friendly than coming to town and facing this four-level residence as you come into the heart of the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Veronica Stewart Long. There we go. And you're our last speaker.
All right. Best for last? Thank you for all the time that you've taken to do this, for all the reiterations and more meetings and more consideration. I think it seems like, it could look like there's a lot of back and forth and maybe disagreement, but there's really been a very strong, consistent message all along, and that is that people are passionate about this and it's important to people. And I believe those messages are coming through because it's like the heart of the community. I'm a... I want to say lifelong resident of Livermore, but I'm not. I grew up here. My family, my nuclear family lives here, but I grew up and moved away, and then I came back with my kids. So whatever that means. So I do want to make a few points, though. One of the things I did when I moved away was went and studied community development, and one thing I think is really important is to keep the community. The community is a thing, and keep it in mind, not just an industry, but the community. And the fact that this parcel, this hunk of land, could be a tool to strengthen the community, to make it more resilient, not just make the economy more resilient, make the people and the community and the warm fuzzies and all that stuff, make that more resilient. I don't know if anybody here remembers the meetings, some planning meetings, and I'm guessing maybe around 1970. About a big hunk of land ended somewhere around the Vine Theater, and I don't know exactly where the outlines were. I remember them because my dad went to them, and so I was a little kid, and so I don't know a lot about him, but I remember he was really excited because the, just the brainstorming that was going on, and it was called something like the Super Block or... It was like this great opportunity that the city had. It had a huge chunk of land, all beautiful rectangle, and they could do something with it. And then I think Millspring Apartments went in and right in the middle of it, and that has been an area that's been lost to the community, really. I mean, that is an area that the community does not use. So I would just say, please, don't do things like that, that make an area that we can't meander through and visit and, like someone else just mentioned. Make it something that the community can still play Pokemon Go through and, you know, kids... Lizzie Fountain. We just need Lizzie Fountain nests all through it. It's something I think that builds bonds and makes us more resilient. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have to comment about the Mill Creek Parks or the Apartments. That was supposed to be... There was going to be restaurants and... That was supposed to be, there was going to be restaurants and shopping and a multi-screen movie theater, and they actually had a ribbon, or they had a groundbreaking twice for the movie theater. They were both in Octobers, just before the election, if I'm somewhat of a cynic, but they, but twice they had a groundbreaking for that theater that was going to go on Railroad Avenue. And that, there was, the Mill Creek Apartments was originally going to be senior apartments, and it was going to anchor this whole wonderful thing of restaurants and shopping and the theater. And the developer was allowed to build the apartments first, and then he bailed. Nothing else happened. For 17 years, 33 screens were opened in the Tri Valley, none in Livermore. So then we got the beautiful Livermore cinema that we have today. But yeah, that was a real interesting series of developments. So with that, we've got another two hours, so let's take, let's take another quick break and get back here at about 11:15. Thank you. All right, three, go. Okay, round three. We are back after our brief break. And so there was, one of the speakers brought up a point which rather concerns me, I just want to make sure that we're clear about it all. Someone suggested that, that up here, we're only kidding, that we're not really serious about, about the affordable housing component and moving that off onto Pacific, onto this campus. And I know that, I'm pretty serious about that, but I'd just like to ask the city attorney to weigh in on that, that as we have developed this agreement with the Stockman's Association, it is our intent to move some of the housing that we, from the downtown, to this site, and that we truly intend to build that. Could you just elaborate on that for a bit?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Jason, I'll call you, your city attorney. I did have the opportunity to speak with Victoria Fries earlier in the week. I had sent Victoria a copy of your staff report to make sure that Carla was kept in the loop as far as what you were considering. I actually spoke with Victoria this afternoon, as far as what was going to transpire here this evening. So I was somewhat disappointed that the issues that were raised at the lecture weren't raised in our telephone call this afternoon. Be that as it may. The issue that I heard that was raised this evening was the council's intention to pursue the affordable housing opportunity here on the Civic Center Campus, aside from the agreement with the Stockman's Association. To address that particular concern, I would request that the council consider the following addition to its resolution that it has before today, to include a further now for there as the city council, the city Livermore hereby resolves and authorize the city manager to do the following. One, to direct staff to immediately initiate a general plan amendment for the Civic Center Campus to allow for an affordable housing land use. Further, direct staff to concurrently initiate a zoning change to correspond to the new general plan designation for affordable housing here at this site. To pursue an RFP to identify a partner, to develop affordable senior housing on the Civic Center Campus, and finally, to take all necessary steps to process these applications for the city's council's consideration at the earliest possible date. I think that addressed the concerns that were raised this afternoon, this evening at the lecture.
Okay. So, sounds like we're pretty clear. All right, very good. All right. We have heard from, there was 70 speaker cars, we've probably heard from 60 speakers. And amazingly enough, there was surprising support and unanimity for, for what we are considering before us, at least with the, the Stockman's Association Park. And I agree with, with Mr. Early's assessment that there's a lot of stuff that we're talking about. And I would like to take that, just like what we proposed, is phasing all of these steps, but, but phasing this, this process, because it's almost 11:30, and tomorrow's going to be an early morning. So, for me, well, yeah. So, well, some of this, so. Okay, so we're going to, let's, let's just maybe tackle one of them tonight. Vice Mayor.
So, given that was, everyone that spoke tonight, I think, I didn't even hear the one that didn't, they didn't want Stockman's Park. So I recommend that the first thing we tackle is the Stockman's Park, and that we do it tonight. So I move that we do staff recommendation with respect to Stockman's Park, with the addition that we go for the immediate general plan amendment, the zoning changes, that pursue the partner, and take all necessary steps to make it happen quickly. So I...
Okay, moved by Council, moved by Vice Mayor Warner, seconded by Councilman Carling.
And can I ask for just, just one comment on that? And I want to make sure that the, the public and that you, that people hear this as well. There was some criticism about, you know, behind closed door and negotiating in closed session. I just want to say that the Stockman's were very firm on their requirements and what they were asking for, and I felt personally that it was also very fair and very reasonable what they were asking for. So they were down to the specifics, as you see in the contract, as to where the statue's located, the shape, the size, the location of the park. Everything that they asked for, I thought, was extremely reasonable, and therefore that's why I can wholeheartedly support the motion and the second on this item.
Well, also, they're very patient as well. I mean, you know, 55 years.
You know, I'm, I'm surprised I didn't hear, you know, "Get a rope" or something like that, you know, with the, with the whole, how long we've been taking, you know, I just, I am very glad that this has been addressed. And if we had known about this earlier, you know, maybe the timing is, you know, fortuitous, and it's just, it's this perfect situation that occurred out of it. So, you know, it's, it's the good things come to those who wait, and now we have such a great deal, so.
Well, you mentioned the, the rope, you know, I, at first it was very reticent. I've done the, the Green Horn pinning competition a few times, and at first I was very worried because I thought they were pinning the Green Horn. But actually, the, the Green Horn sort of stands, sits there on a horse and yells while the steers come around, but, so that was, I'm still kind of shy on that one. But I think that, I agree that this has been quite a process, and it's quite fortuitous that this year is the 100th anniversary of the Livermore Rodeo. And the rodeo, as I've said a couple of times from the dais, the rodeo was originally to serve the military during World War I. So I think that's really quite, quite fortuitous, and it was the Stockman that, that stepped up to, to make that happen.
And also going further into the detail, not, not too much because of the hour, but, you know, with the easements and the concern about what is built around Stockman's Park, I don't, I don't blame them. You know, they've been horn-swaggled once by the city, you know, so to speak.
That's a technical term.
Yeah, and it doesn't, they need assurances that what is going to occur around the site will actually happen, and that's the only way we can do this, so.
Okay.
I think it's entirely appropriate that as we start to build the downtown, that this is the first element to go into it, quite honestly, just to begin with the Stockman's Park, the trade we're making.
Well, the fact that we heard tremendous support for that tonight, I think that's, that's quite remarkable. I haven't, I haven't heard that, that unanimity in support in a long time, so.
Basketball score, you dropped in a half minute.
Yeah, all right. Wow, this is almost too easy. So, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to push my luck.
Somebody said it was a no-brainer.
I'm not going to, so, all right, we've got, any further discussion on the motion?
No, I would, I would like to say I appreciate Mr. Alcala's willingness to add those four other elements after the comments earlier today. I think that's an important means to address that concern brought up by the earlier speaker. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. So with that, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Warner, seconded by, by Councilman Carling. Any further discussion on the motion? I will then call the question, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Yay, very good. Thank you, one and all. All right, so we are back here tomorrow? 7 o'clock tomorrow? By, since I'm adjourning here, but, yeah, so we adjour, 7 o'clock tomorrow? So we are going to continue the meeting?
Yes, sir.
To tomorrow, which is January 30th, if memory serves me right. It's still, yeah, tomorrow is January 30th, we didn't go past midnight, so that's always a good thing. So we'll continue this meeting to tomorrow, 7 o'clock, January 30th, same time and same place, we will be back here in the Triple Wide. Thank you.